Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us for the Selectmen's Meeting. Would everyone please join us in a pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Just a couple announcements tonight. Remind the schools of close this week for spring vacation, so motorists, please take caution for the children on the roads. And also tomorrow is Administrative Professionals' Day. And the Board wishes to take a moment to thank all the employees of the town departments and their hard work on behalf of the town of Millville. The Board appreciates your efforts. Next, we have approval of minutes and warrants. We have April 8th, 2014 at 6:30 PM.
April 8th, 6:30. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have minutes for April 8th at 7:00 PM.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for April 8th at 7:00 PM. That's red. Motion to accept the minutes for April 8th at 7:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have April 9th at 7:00 PM. At, sorry, 6:30?
6:30.
Yep. One, two, six.
Motion to approve the minutes for April 9th at 6:30 PM. Or second minute.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And then next, we have April 14th at 7:00 PM.
Motion to accept the minutes for April 14th at 7:00 PM. Or second minute. Any warrants tonight?
Was there a vote on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry about that.
That's okay. We do have warrants this evening. Three warrants. The first is the payroll warrant for the pay period ending April 19th, 2014, in the amount of $31,490.47. Next is the vendor warrant dated April 22nd, 2014, in the amount of $133,495.38. And then we have the payroll deductions for the pay period ending April 7th, in the amount of $4,673.03.
Motion to sign the warrants.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, if it's okay, if I could take the meeting out of order real quick. We have a real quick presentation from the veterans' park. They'd like to be first if everyone agrees with that. Mr. Thor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know our Board. During the past year, we have continued the beautification process in the park. We've taken down a tree so the park would be illuminated at night from the spotlight across the street. We planted a tree. Just this week, we had the stump ground on a tree and we put in three and a half yards of loom and seeded it, and we done that project. We intend, or we have in the past, we put, we had a tree fall on the far end of the park. Mrs. Sullivan, a neighbor, and the park committee got together and between the two of us, we got the tree removed. We had the Department of Corrections come down. They painted the cannons, finished the benches, and completely rebuilt all of the benches. We were advised at that time to wait approximately a year to paint the benches themselves to let the wood dry out. We intend to do that the coming year. In the coming year, we intend to plant two more trees. We are going to put some bushes, as many as we can afford, to put in along the back perimeter of the park, because there's a little brook runs through there, which sometimes becomes an ice hole, people throwing things in there. We have taken down the trees that were covering the monument. We are now in the process of extending the walkway to the monument and then around to the back of the monument, and we hope to accomplish that this spring. So far this year, we have $145 left in our expense account, and we will spend that within the coming month on trees and shrubbery. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have any.
No? Thank you, Peter.
Okay, thank you very much for taking me out.
Okay, so next on the agenda is Bob Ferrari from Northeast Engineering for the MES water.
Good evening.
Good evening, Bob.
Month or two since I was last here. What I wanted to do tonight was give you the status update and relative to all the work that's been done and the status of the water system and the water quality, and just give you an early briefing on what we're planning as far as, you know, moving into the summer, when the school operations are, you know, cut back. Status, everything's been done. The entire rebuild, rebedding, modifications, upgrades, et cetera, operationally and physically of the green sand filtration system and some other things done on the water system at the elementary school was completed. It was done back in February, during the school break in February. To very quickly summarize, we did a, we said we'd do a 10-day start-up and validation. We did 12-day just because it worked out that way. It just, it did. Everything's summarized in this memo that submitted through Helen. I won't, I'm not going to go through this word by word, but to summarize it is, we started operating the system officially on December 2nd. The critical issues of iron and manganese have been in compliance since December 2nd, period. Okay? That's not even open for debate. The other two concerns were VOCs, specifically tetrahydropherin. There has not been a single incidence. We've been monitoring VOCs, many rounds of complete VOC scan-type monitoring, all the parameters. Everything is non-detectable, okay? There's been no tetrahydropherin, you know, no methylethylketone, no acetone. Those are the three that were problematic last summer. As you're aware, we removed some of that piping that had been installed a year ago, you know, in February of a year ago. That was the source of the problem. And I'll come back to this in a few minutes. Relative to disinfection byproducts, which was the concern, because we're using, you know, a form of chlorine for pre-oxidation before the green sand filters, we're in compliance. We actually had, now understand how I'm saying this, we ran three, let's call them experiments or tests. We wanted to find out how high we could push the chlorine residual before we had a disinfection byproduct problem. So I did the same test three times, well, three times over a span of several months. And we monitored that because we want to demonstrate, all right, what was our residual? What was the level? And bring it back, and then we brought it back down again. The short answer is, if you recall, we said we want to run the green sand filters at a .5 milligram per liter chlorine residual coming out of the filters. We determined that that will keep us in compliance. There'll be no issues with disinfection byproducts. We had to push it as high, up to one and a half to have a problem with disinfection byproducts. But we're in compliance. We've got multiple rounds of monitoring, and so we are in compliance for all parameters. And really, it's been that way since December, quite frankly. The refurbishment is done. The media was sent out to Inversand. We basically are throwing out the anthracite, the top layer, because it was in pretty tough shape. The green sand was in generally good condition, and we've got it chemically re-oxidized, and it's available. We're just going to store it, and it's going to remain available. We'll use it for replenishment down the road. We're not going to throw that out by any means.
Okay.
So we felt pretty good about that. You know, it's not in perfect condition, but it was, you know, we were able to basically bring it back with some chemical treatments on it, is what we did. Okay? So we're in good shape there. So that's a nice benefit, because that material is not cheap. Okay? You've got several thousand dollars of inventory sitting there, which is good. Everything else in the system's running well. All maintenance work is current, okay? All the immediate repairs that had to be made were made. We made some other safety improvements. We've mentioned in other meetings. We're monitoring Glenn. It's generally Glenn always coming in. I occasionally will come in either with him or, you know, as an alternative. We have another operator who's also now trained on this facility. In fact, he was, he should be in this week, as a matter of fact. I believe it's tomorrow he's coming in, because we want to have multiple operators so we can cover if somebody's out sick or, you know, a vacation or something like that. And we're maintaining a monitoring log on site. We're maintaining our own electronic monitoring log, and all the reporting is current and submitted to Massachusetts DEP. So my final recommendation on the water system is there, you are in complete compliance. The system is operating very well, very consistently. There's no issues. And my recommendation is that the school, I plan to issue a formal letter tomorrow to the town and to Massachusetts DEP telling them that we've been monitoring for months since December. Everything's in compliance. We're going, we're recommending we go back, the school go back onto the drinking water system in the school and can be released from bottled water. Okay? Now, there may be some internal decision-making for the town, but that's my formal recommendation to the town at this point in time. There's no reason to keep the school on bottled water at this point in time, okay? From the standpoint of water quality, there isn't.
So you're waiting for the DEP to give their blessing, correct?
Well, yeah, I'd like them to say, I want them to, technically, we don't have to get their blessing, but it'd be nice if they concur. I'll put it that way.
Yeah.
Okay? You know, you want to make sure everybody's on the same page. So we do want to get that from them. Relative to, you know, the school year, you know, we're now approaching the end of the school year, and we are now planning out our, the operations and maintenance work for the summer. We're going to do some coordination with Greenie simply because they're going to have certain maintenance functions at the school, certain points in time when they're going to need water, like for washing floors or doing other maintenance work. And we're going to modify, we're going to lower the level in the storage tank, and we're going to do some other things. Plus, we're going to be doing maintenance on the system, and then at some point, we're going to de-water the tank and do a complete internal inspection of the storage tank, things of that nature. But we're laying out the schedule for the summer. We will submit that to the town. We'll submit that to the school, so everybody knows what we're doing and when it's being done. And of course, we'll provide full documentation on that. So it's all good stuff. Also, just so we're absolutely clear, every seminal that we make to the state, Helen gets a copy of. We submit to Helen electronically at the same time as we submit to DEM. So all the information is current with all the interested and necessary parties, okay? And there's no gaps in the data. And that's current as of yesterday, I believe it is. So that's where we stand.
Just one quick question, Bob. The variability in TTHMs, could you speak to that?
Sure. Just to be as clear, TTHMs is the acronym for total trihalomethanes. That is a, what they call a disinfection byproduct. If you chlorinate the water, the chlorine will break down and have other reactions that create these chlorination byproducts. The limit is 80 parts per billion. That's the regulatory water quality limit. Because we're using sodium hypochlorite, a form of chlorine, we inject that into the water before the green sand filters to pre-oxidize iron and manganese, we're going to have some disinfection byproducts. They've always been there at a level, you know, 30, 40, 50, et cetera. What we've determined, and we've got, as I said, we ran this test three times in a row. I believe we can get a lot of the variability out, okay? In fact, we ran it up purposely, got it up to, we actually brought the chlorine up to 1.5, and we were at 80 on disinfection at the nurses station, which is our monitoring station. Then we had, we also monitored a second station and got a 90. Then we dialed it back. We cut back the dosage about 5 percent, and we got a 52 and a 59. So we're very confident that if we keep it down around the .5 we want it to be, we'll probably typically be 40, 50, maybe 60, with a little bit of a safety margin in there. We're going to watch it very, very carefully. As I said, if we ever get to the point where we felt there was a concern, we can change chemistries. We can switch the potassium permanganate, which actually eliminates the issue. It's just that it's easier to use the sodium hypochlorite, and we'd rather use it if we can. So we don't believe we have an issue. We are actually doing more monitoring of that than is required by the state, and we feel very comfortable.
How frequently do you monitor?
Lately, it's been about weekly, just because we're trying to build a good database. So we're sure that, you know, that we've got it where we want to be. And I always tell people, in the water business, the state mandates what your minimum monitoring requirements are. We tend to do more because the minimum sometimes is not good enough for good process control and quality control. So we tend to do more, okay? And that's actually in the budgets that I have given the school for some of the activities. The budget we provided for the scope of work for the upgrade of the system, that was included in the analytical budget there, because I knew we were going to have to do some more than would be mandated by the state. In fact, technically, the state didn't want us to do anything until about three weeks ago. But we've been doing it because we have to know how it's working. So that's the plan right now. One other thing, and I have to apologize to Helen, I've been promising the town a scope and budget for upgrading to a remote monitoring system. I really should have had it in a while ago, and the reason we don't is because we went to the panel builder who built the control panel at the school, built to our specifications in 2010, because they built a panel that theoretically, the best people to talk to about, we want to pull signals out of the panel to send them remotely. And unfortunately, we've been going in circles with them for several months, and I've kind of gotten the end of my rope there. We will have that to you very shortly. You have my word on that, and I apologize for the delay before, because if the town makes the decision to move forward on that, the summertime is really when you want to install it, when you want to implement it, okay? As opposed in the middle of the school year. So we're going to get that shortly. And plus, some updated operating cost information that we owe you, okay?
That was one of three questions, Mr. Chairman. If I could ask two other questions. The re-oxidized green sand is being stored where?
At the moment, it's at the school. We will give you the option of, we can store it at the school, or we can store it in my warehouse. And if we store it in my warehouse, it'll be labeled and dedicated to Millville Elementary School. It will not be, we won't go in there and grab two cubic feet to give to somebody else. It'll be, it's dedicated to you. We store a lot of materials in our warehouse.
Is that a decision that this board should make, or is that something you determine with custodian or?
Let's put it this way, Greenie doesn't have a whole lot of extra room in the boiler room. He could probably use the floor space. I'll put it that way. We have no problem storing it. We have plenty of storage capacity.
You have a better climate control, will you store it in your place?
Probably. We probably do.
I would, I would take an help.
All right, we'll say, we'll just, you know, in the next week or two, we'll get it out of there. And that's no problem. That's not an issue at all.
Yeah.
Not a problem.
And my other question was, all of the safety improvements you made, are we completely in compliance now with the DEP mandate, the title?
Yes. Oh, yeah, that, actually, it's Title VI. Title VI or Section VI.
So that's completely?
Oh, yeah, completely. By the way, what that's referring to is they wanted flow-paced control of the chemical feed. We were doing on-off control with the pump, and the reason is because we said there was very little variability. Just so we're as clear, we've got flow-paced control, plus we're interlocked to the well pumps. So we have actually, you know, two levels of safety control there. We get about 2 percent variability in the flow rate coming in. We've been monitoring that continuously. And we vary from about 4.9 to about 5.1 gallons a minute, which is very little variability. Coming back to Joe's question, one of the reasons that I think you had a lot of variability before in the disinfection byproducts is because, not so much because of the metering pump, is because you were getting a lot, there was some variability in the incoming flow, because they were, it was getting dialed down to like three gallons a minute and put back up to five gallons a minute, and it was all over the landscape sometimes. And that can be problematic, okay? Plus, you also have a very variable iron load coming in. That's another thing, is we're seeing very consistently, your iron level is averaging about nine parts per million. It used to be two or three or four. Now you're averaging about nine. We've seen as high as 12 coming in. And manganese has gone down a little bit, but the iron is actually double what it used to be. But it's not a problem. It's being handled. All but one analysis has been below detection. We can't even find it in the treated water. And same thing for manganese. Every manganese analysis has been below detection. So we can't do better than that.
Awesome.
Bob, Residence has a question for you.
Hi, Bob. I'm Valerie Hager. I've met with you before. And I live in, on Lake Street in Millville. And I think you might have just touched on one of my questions, is that, is there any iron and manganese leaking through after the filtration?
No.
No.
Well, let's put it this way, none that can be detected by the laboratory, and we're using a pretty tight detection limit.
Okay. Okay. And then what is the, you're saying right now that you were doing monitoring of the water levels about once a week? What is it going to be going forward after you get the okay from DEP or DEP in person?
We actually monitor with field tests. We're here twice a week. We monitor twice a week. In addition to that, we've been doing lab work on about a weekly basis, okay? The mandated lab work the state wants is typically a quarterly, okay? So we're still doing a lot more than they're requiring. We will probably back off from the once per week. It might become once a month or something like that. But we're going to let the system tell us where it needs to be. We're going to monitor as much as we feel is appropriate to make sure that we can demonstrate proper operation and proper quality control of the water in the school.
I'm not quite sure how they're using the water at the elementary school right now. Do you expect there to be any changes when you bring the system back online and get them able to start drinking it? Are you going to kind of monitor it for like a little closer until after you get like stable variables coming in? Stable results?
Well, one, water actually is being, water's not being used for drinking consumption at the school. It's been used for other uses at the school. Okay? So adding the drinking components, it will probably add maybe 15 percent to the daily water use, okay? Give or take a little bit. We will absolutely continue to monitor very closely. Once we go back online with being used for drinking purposes at the school, we will continue to monitor very closely, because we want there to be absolute 100 percent confidence level that we have good water quality, and we're not compromising anything.
Okay. Last question that I had is that, are the parents going to get any type of notification regarding the results and how they compare to state recommendations?
That would presumably come from the town. I'll be more than happy to discuss with Helen. This is what I can tell you, is that every single monitored parameter is in compliance and has been since December 2nd. Okay? That's what I can tell you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Helen, do you have any other questions?
I don't.
Got it covered, all right, okay.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you very much.
Hey, Bob, I got to congratulate you. That's the shortest presentation you've ever had.
Good job.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Bob.
Next, we have Blackstone Valley Vocational High School. We have Dr. Fitzpatrick and Mr. Jerry Finn, Millville's representative.
Good evening. We were committed to the bottled water before we got the report.
I did want to mention, if I could, Mr. Chairman, that over my shoulder here is Mr. Joe Hall. Joe is the chairman of the Blackstone Valley Tech School Committee. I serve as vice. And Joe wanted to come down as chairman to see how things operated here in Millville as well. So with that, as we have done as past protocol, I'd like to go over what has taken place at Valley Tech. Give you some updates on specifics for planning purposes and for purposes that would benefit planning here at the town, as well as being able to give you some of the results from last year, which I think, again, I'm very pleased with, are very, very, very positive. So with that, I'll, you hang those two over there. And then here, one, two, three, here. You have to excuse me, I need glasses now, I can't quite really read. All right. What I wanted to go over here first is some summary. It's important for planning purposes to know how many children, how many students, I should say, are currently in the system and what the forecast looks like going forward. So I think for planning purposes, that would make the most sense. We'll start there as we have in the past. Current student enrollment at BVT is 10 students in grade nine. Again, I make note to the fact that there's five females and five males. Actually, Doc, help me with this. Isn't the population now, is it pretty much 50/50, or is it balanced a little bit in favor of the females now?
It's pretty 50/50. It only took us 50 years to grow them.
I think it was five to one when I went.
Well, I think that's one thing that I want to make note of, that the opportunity for the young ladies in the district now, very much apparent as it is for the gentlemen, where before it was pretty much precluded from that. So we're proud of that, and we continue to monitor that for you. Nine students in grade 10. You have nine students in grade 11, and the bubble that we had was 14 students in grade 12, and you had one student in the LPM, LPN course as well. So for the official state records, October 1st, 2013, which is the actual mark with the state tallies, you had 43 total students. Now, BMR in 2014, total eighth grade enrollment, this was at BMR, 148, these are DES numbers, not ours. And in 2013, there was 154, so it has gone down slightly. Postcards of interest received at BVT were 94, and in '13 was 132. Students who actually toured the facility were 80. That's 54 percent of the total class at BMR, and 105 in '13. If anybody has any questions about what that means, Mr. Baker, if you've got a question, just be happy to answer it if you would.
Why do we think that happened?
Why do we think that it went down slightly?
Yeah.
I guess there's a lot of reasoning for it, but I would assume that the, I think football started in the last couple of years, and I think that helped some young men to make a decision that football was important. It was a decision that BMR took. I think it was taken under the light that they wanted, and they had quite a following with that, and that some of the kids took them up on it. So I'm, you know, I think that'd be one of the answers. Doc, I don't know if you have any other statistical validation other than this, what you believe?
Well, no. My last conversation with my colleague Perry Davis, who's representative, was that there was also a percentage of students looking at alternative education, you know, Catholic education or other options, not simply Catholic. And that was all part of the challenge that the sending school system faced.
Good question. Thank you, though. Anybody has any question, anytime, just stop me. Okay, total cost per student in Millville. And now, remind yourself here, this includes the full transportation cost with the debt and tuition. This is fully loaded, okay? What I did was I took 12, 13, 14, 15, and I've taken and put the variables down there for you. 257, 298, and 12, 43 students. So if you do the math on that, it comes out to be 5984 per student. In '13, came out to be 46 students, and you had 6207. In '14, 295, 648. With 44 students, that come out to be 6719, again, fully loaded. And in '15, it was 308, 328, 43 students, 7170 per student. Okay? So that's the way the thing has progressed over the last four years. Okay, so that's the way the thing has progressed over the last four years of the students that we've had. Now, the one thing that's interesting in the 15, the state has mandated a formula using the new state municipal growth factors. And in 13, the growth factor here in Millville was 3.03. Don't ask me how they get there, but that's how they do it. One of the ways they do it is that they look at the amount of real estate and the value of that real estate within an area and they do some sort of math calculation on that and that then dictates the health of the community. Okay? So that's what it is. Okay? So when they mandated that, they said the municipal growth factor in 13 was 3.03. In FY14, they said the municipal growth factor was 3.83. Well, we have had some new houses, as you know, put in and those houses I don't think are less expensive than the common base of houses that we have in Millville. In fact, they're more expensive. So when you look at that with a 3.83, that required Millville to increase its minimum contribution, which is what the state said, that Millville had to pay, was an additional We're requesting $12,680. So 91.3% of the total request that we're asking for here tonight is basically mandated by the state because they believe that the town of Millville is actually in a better spot today than it was previously.
Want that?
Don't argue with me. I'm just telling you what the state's, but that's how the calculation works and it's based on real estate value and per capita income and a few other senses. Any questions on that? So you can see that what we're asking for, $12,680, $11,578 is actually, I don't have any choice on it, the states that we have to pay. Okay? Okay, total contact teaching day, something we're very proud of. Ever since Doc and I have been together, we've been able to increase the amount of the contact teaching. And we're talking about when they go off onto seminars or have half day, we're talking about in front of students, teaching. Well, that's 193 contact days and that is the state's longest. It has been for 11 years and we're pretty proud of that. Took a lot in contract negotiations to have the teachers come around to that way of thinking, but when we first started, it was 180 and we're happy to say that it is 193 of the state's longest. Now, if you took the $12,680, that is what the total ask is, of which $11,500 is the state. You divide it by 193 contact teaching days and then divide that by 43 students, because that's how many students go from Millville to BVT. What we're asking for is a $1.53 per day increase, per student, including all state mandates, debt and transportation, all rolled in. $1.53 per day, per student. Per pupil assessment cost, again, I think this might be my eighth year, I've come here and told you this, Doc doesn't like me to mention it, but I'm gonna, anyways, per pupil assessment cost is the lowest of all the other 12 communities. The district average with the debt is $9,992 per student. That's all students BVT, all 13 members. If you look at Millville's assessment, it's $7,170 per student or about $2,822 less, 28% less than the whole district average. So we've had a very, very, very favorable run here for about eight years and I hope that that will continue. Again, it's a function of students going to the school and trying to keep as much you can of the costs down and find other ways to have solutions for things. The operating ownership decreased. We had one less student than we did the year prior. So our operation ownership decreased from .03745 to .03626. That is a function of the number of students. That will go up and down slightly based on the difference. Enrollment at BVT, this is kind of a fun statistic for me anyways, enrollment at BVT has increased from 816 students in 2002 to 1,186 in 2014 with an increase of 370 more students or 45% increase in students. There's not many, if any, school in the state of Massachusetts that can boast those type of numbers. The BVT average student increase of greater than 3% over the last five years. So in other words, the thing has continued to grow over the last five years at a rate over than, greater than 3% with a total budget over that same span of five years is an increase requested of only 2.58. It's business math is what it is. The more students you can put across with a fixed asset and hold down your costs, you can literally get a better yield of the dollar spent. And that was what the whole intent was when we put our master plan together back in 2000. BVT was one of only 13 high schools, only 13 in the state, applied and was approved for the Competitive MSBA High School Science Lab Initiative. You've probably heard of referred to STEM. I think I mentioned it last year, the grant program. This award, which we won, coupled with the remainder of the state-funded recently completed roof project of $375,000, secured total state funds in excess of $875,000, as Joe likes to call it, cost avoidance for Millville and the rest of the 12 district members. Proud to say that no additional funding requests from member towns were needed for finishing the roof project and for the building of the two new STEM labs with the 24 new workstations. Again, it was done in-house. MCAS, measurement we all hear about, numerical results released by the DESE demonstrated BVT, and I'm proud of this, is again, I think for the eighth year, ranked number one when compared to the other 25 sister vocational schools and also again ranked number one for the third straight year when compared to our other 11-member district high schools offering academic-only curriculums. And again, I'm gonna say this and I mean it, this should forever dispel the stigma or the label that a vocational student cannot compete intellectually. They can and they have. Data used to determine this statement was from the MCAS administration in spring of 2013, released by the DESE in September of 2013. It is based on what they call the total CPI of the three disciplines now. As you understand, there are three things. It was math and ELA and now it's math, ELA and science. Valley Tech students took home an unprecedented 67 medals and swept six categories at the District Five Skills USA Competition, competition recently held at Bay Path Vocational School. BVT students won a total of 22 bronze, 21 silver and 24 gold medals. So it shows you again that we still know our mission, we know who we are, we're a vocational school and these kids proved it. According to the Mass DESE, the four-year graduation rate at BVT in 2013 was 97.8% compared to the state average of 85%. And the dropout rate at BVT was 1.5% compared to the state average of 6.5%. Additionally, of the 2013 graduates, 72% went on to post-secondary education, 23% went into employment and 5% enlisted in the military. So I hope that gives you some idea of the progress that we've made, the things that have been accomplished by the teachers, by the instructors, the administration and most importantly, by the students there at BVT when given the opportunity. If there's no further questions here, seeing here are none, I'll let Dr. Fitzpatrick like to comment on a couple of additional subjects.
Thanks again. It's my 21st year serving the town. It's been a pleasure and an opportunity to interact with this board and in the other voice that, and Helen in particular, in the sense of the professionalism throughout the year. As you can tell, Mr. Finn kids me about mentioning the per pupil assessment. That's because the other 12 towns, there are 12 different school community members, they don't have the same bragging rights. Mr. Finn doesn't join me in those communities. I try not to be tied in feathers in those communities. But in any case, we're pleased to see that we're able to do something for a community given the financial challenges, a small rural community with minimal commercial base that Millville has, but a proud history relative to American manufacturing and the Blackstone Valley in particular. Mr. Finn has always preferred a kind of return on investment style presentation, stockholder kind of message and has offered and encouraged me to make some comments relative to the data counts that are coming up next. Before doing that, I just want to mention, people have inquired about our overall budget process. I think the simplest way to discover our budget process is we draw from four pockets. The first one we draw from are grants and donations. So we maximize anything that's useful but consistent with our mission so that we don't get taken, distracted in some fashion.
I want to ask you one question. You've mentioned grants. How does your grant writer get paid and how do you take care of that one part of your expense?
Initially, the grants themselves were receptive to having, covering the cost of a grant writer. A little later, they changed some of the rules. The current grant person is a .6 FTE or 60% person. That person is covered within the operational budget, which is before you and has been for next year with a total 2.5% increase. That's how we cover it now. Before, I used to cover it within the grants, but I can't do that anymore. So it was still worthwhile to have a .6 person. We used to have a full-time person. We don't, we can't afford that, so we have the .6 person.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course. The second pocket we draw from is state aid. We try to maximize state aid, whether it's channeled from the federal government and/or the state. And of course, as the regional system, although you serve by two regional systems, we're able to access any additional regional incentive aid, whether it exists, it's being toyed about again at the legislature, the regional transportation, known as chapter 71, but anywhere we can grab a dollar, consistent again with what our mission is and responding to the needs of industry. The third is local assessments. Therefore, that's the one that, you know, you're looking at and we expect you would each year and your finance committee has previously looked at it and we respond. And the fourth is excess and deficiency. We regularly look at any reserve, for you would be stabilization of free cash, but at excess and deficiency with a commitment to replenish and we're always looking to replenish. In some ways, we can replenish some of that money by doing projects in the community that save them money and put more money in that. And we also have the benefit of having 17 vocational technical programs, including the Three Seasons Lunch and many others, that allow us to do things that most traditional schools could not do. But so in summary, that's how we handle it. Those four pockets drive the money to fund the budget each year. The advanced placement, for a number of years, the employers and colleges have looked very favorably on advanced placement courses. This is a rigorous, kind of above honors or role activity and we've been participating in that for a number of years and now have advanced placement and almost 400 tests are administered to our students. We've always thought every opportunity that exists for a student should be part of what we do and therefore we're striving always to add new opportunities for our students. But if you look at some of the results here, you can see that noteworthy increases include 95% advanced and proficient scores and that it's oftentimes a good process to compare how did you do versus the state averages. And you can see how they're highlighted here. In every category, there are significant deltas that we are way ahead of the state averages. And that won't, that means we will need to strive even harder to continue to improve from where we were at last, the last threshold, the last testing. When you look at the state testing, Mr. Finn has already commented on the success of our MCAS, which is only one of the assessment tests that is given. In our case, we also give a certificate of occupational proficiencies where our students take exams in all of the vocational technical areas. Sometimes they're written, sometimes a combination of practical and written. For example, the health assistants could be involved in bedside approaches and dealing with instrumentation. Construction technology might be involved in constructing things as well as taking other, some simulator tests in heavy equipment operation and a variety of other things. So we have a whole series of exams to continue to measure and to give employers evidence of the skill sets that the students have mastered. The, today's industry has encouraged youngsters to continue their education. In many cases, for example, in the senior class of about 300 students, 1 in 3, greater than 1 in 3, about 120 students are currently in cooperative educational placements as part of the senior class. So every other week, they report to employer to earn at least minimum wage and to be monitored by their shop instructors as far as skill sets in their trade area. And then they return the following week for the academic infusion of voc tech. This has allowed many of our students to continue their education with the employer, whether they're co-op or otherwise, subsidizing part of that. Usually the employer seeks, and you, Roland, has recently shared some of the situations with some of our students and graduates. And this is a regular practice. It gives the youngsters a head start on the industry, a subsidy, and usually the employer's looking for a couple of years' commitment if in fact they're gonna help pay for some of the college costs. But we've also looked at aggressive scholarship opportunities. And highlighted in the next section is the fact that in 2013, there were, you know, $440,000 worth of scholarships were awarded with a renewable value. Many scholarships continue for four years if you continue to earn successful, many times it's a B average or more, or 3.0. But that has a value of more than one and a half million dollars for these students, which is a great opportunity to avoid the most common pitfall, okay, of going into debt or the finances challenge for any homestead. One of the things I'd like to do is since we don't get an opportunity to present on television in town, to recognize some of the Millville residents that were recipients of these scholarships. They include Trevor Bulkey, Joshua Donancor, Logan Casper, Nicholas Primo, Lee Chiarasso, Christopher Smith and James Watson, although we're proud of all the students that participated. We wish to recognize their special achievements.
If I may say one thing, the thing I'm particularly pleased at, I know some of these families, this gives these kids the opportunity. And that's what the state has done and what we try to take advantage of and we're real proud to see that seven of our residents who may not have had the opportunity have it now. And that's a great, great opportunity for these kids.
It's not uncommon, actually when I was originally recruited to serve as superintendent, the school committee asked whether I'd be willing to lobby or appear before certain boards, could be the senate or the house of representatives or the board of education or others, to lobby for the best interest of vocational technical education. And I continue to do that. And recently, I was in Malden at 8:30 in the morning. I suggest you don't do that, you're just sitting in traffic forever, but it's, you know, go the night before, stay at a friend's house, stay somewhere. But in any case, we have regularly pursued and earlier today, I was in Congress from a governor's office, Senator Richard Moore was among those, former lieutenant governor Tim Murray, people from the Chamber of Commerce in the area. This is all part of what we do outside the traditional role, but it connects us as an economic engine with the many people who have their pulse on new job opportunities, new investment money, new economic development opportunities. And the committee, I would say my school committee has been very supportive of that activity. So it's a mutual, you know, teaming effort. We also have 27 adult students who have graduated now from the post-secondary practical nursing class, including Millville resident Nicole Thomas. This is a great way in which we responded to the health needs. You can see the Milford Area Hospital expanding again. It's interesting, they have a $60 million expansion and it seems that the media is quite supportive of that. I'm advancing a $3 million and you run into challenges, but in any case, their health and support will recognize the return on investment of that. We are also monitoring very closely the activities in the senate as they look at enhancing some of the money from the governor's budget, which is, our budget for FY15 is built on the governor's numbers. And we've seen a slight uptick in regional transportation, about a $30,000 increase from that which we predicted. A year ago, we saw a $100,000 reduction in what we built our budget on, but we've always taken pride in a one-time request and if we have a reduction, more than like you had reductions, either in chapter 90 or somewhere, and so we just bit the bullet and lived without that revenue. But hopefully things are improved this year for all the municipalities as well as the school systems. It would be sorely needed. We've been asked by this community more than loudly over the past several years to examine options for adding new vocational technical programs, reduce the exposure you have for out-of-district tuition and transportation. You, I believe you are now formally aware that while I needed some time to do that, that we have asked the 13 towns to make their contribution, their assessment contribution to a $2.9 million expansion to allow us to add three new vocational technical programs. An animal science with a concentration in veterinarian assisting, a engineering with a concentration on civil, mechanical and aerospace considerations. And the third one is illegal and protective services with a concentration on cybersecurity. Those programs are very rigorous programs. They are not easily replicated in any other setting. They require more than 2,000 hours of lab work or shop work as well as rigorous activities. We will comply with the state's standards. We've been working with the state throughout this process to make sure the programs are approvable and we hope the towns will recognize that this is a worthwhile investment, shared across 12 other partners. And we built in some other factors to make it affordable, attractive as possible and also achievable. I think, I believe there was a question raised about the, when is the debt impact? Let me respond to that. I don't know just who had it, Mr. Finn indicated. What we thought, a year ago I announced this, but I realized and discovered that with 13 towns, the towns had scheduled town meetings in April, May and June. So it was three different months and we ran afoul of the 60-day rule. And we ran afoul of the sixty-day rule. Sixty-day rule in Massachusetts is that if, once the regional school system has, the school board has voted a debt, the town, member towns have sixty days to take action, or else no action is considered approvable. And so, we have never done business that way. We're sneaking something through, we're ramming something through. And when we discovered that and said, okay, we'll pull it back, I'll recommend that to the school committee. The school committee saw the wisdom of pulling it back, giving one-year notice. This is that one-year delay. We also thought it best to give further delays because of the financial challenges that several member towns find themselves. So, we are asking, we're working with our treasurer. We have no new debt that we're going to enter into until during this FY fifteen budget year, the next budget year before. We will enter into short-term debt. The district will accept responsibilities for that. The impact of the towns will not occur till FY sixteen. You've seen the debt numbers, I believe. It is also our intention to take the first two years, which would be FY sixteen and FY seventeen, which are the highest two years of the new mortgage, and rebate fifty percent of that back to the towns. It'll allow us, now, we will explore whether or not we will use the Mass School Building Authority. We're going to kind of continue to monitor whether or not it's worthwhile to do that with the regulations of a project of this. This is one-tenth the project that you supported back in two thousand and one, the thirty-six million dollar budget. Additionally, we're looking at refinancing the old debt, which was unanimously approved. We're at the halfway cycle of the old debt. After ten years, we're allowed, under the laws of Massachusetts, to do refinance. The old debt was created at about a five percent. In both cases, our scenarios have been to look at a three and a half percent, which the municipal officials have told us, that's a reasonable number if you move quickly enough, don't delay. And the, Millville would enjoy, Millville has three percent ownership in the old debt. And therefore, they would have three percent of any savings from the refinance, which would be three percent of eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, all right, at three and a half percent. If in fact, the number is better than that, I certainly hope it will be. If the towns support us at this window of opportunity, then we would be passing that savings. We will do the refinancing no matter what, because we will always save money wherever we can in the best interest of the towns. The towns have expected us to do that, and we certainly will not disappoint.
If I may, Doc, I wanted to look at Millville in particular, in terms of the oh-nine, ten, eleven, twelve, in terms of what the other tuition costs have been to the town. So, if you would pass those two over. This, the source on this comes from the county town report. So, this is what was actually, I have a keep in the things. Doesn't make my wife happy, but I've got all the town reports. I took them forward here. And if you look on the top left, you see it says, that'd be Norfolk Aggie tuition in oh-nine, seventy-eight thousand, seven sixty-eight. Transportation is ninety-one hundred, for a total of eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars to the town. That's what it costs the town to send some youngsters to Norfolk Aggie. And ten went up to one hundred and thirty-three thousand, three forty. And eleven, Norfolk Aggie was one hundred and thirty-five thousand, oh fifty-eight. And then also, in eleven, you had Tri-County entered the picture. And that was fourteen thousand, two seventy-eight for tuition to Tri-County. Transportation, incredibly, was sixteen thousand, one hundred and ten, for a total of thirty thousand, three eighty-nine. To the far right is the percent of what transportation costs is to tuition, just to give you a barometer and a thick look at it. In twelve, Norfolk Aggie was seventy thousand, four ninety-five, transportation seventeen-nine. In twelve, again, you had the other tuition of thirteen, five thirty-three, and transportation of thirteen, four ten, for a total of twenty-six, nine forty-three. Now, when you take those four years, oh-nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and you add them up, in four years, this town paid five hundred and two thousand dollars to send some youngsters to Norfolk Aggie and to Tri-County. If you average that out over the four years, you're talking a hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars per year is what it's cost us as taxpayers. When I mentioned this prior, this board said, you need to help us. Come up with some idea of how we can start to look at those things, which still stay on the educational premise, have job opportunities for, and somehow can help us reduce this amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. If we were able to get this passed, and were able to put in, say, the veterinary, and one or two of those students now end up owing instead of thirty-six thousand dollars to Norfolk Aggie, that's transportation, they can now go to Valley Tech fully loaded for seventy-one hundred, therefore saving the town the difference. We think it's the right way, and you asked us to come up with that, and we come up with this. This demonstrates vivid and in color what the cost of this town has been. And it's, there's nothing you can do about it. It's the, it's the Republic of Massachusetts. They tell you that's the law, that's the law. What we're trying to do is help the smaller towns to be able to survive, given that we have to come up with an alternative for you, otherwise you could sink your whole budget here.
No, I explained that to Finn Con last week, week before last, at our meeting we had with them, that if we invest the seventy-five hundred a year of our debt, and we save one child from going out of district, we've made our money back.
Yeah, and then some.
So, they all understood it that way, in simplest.
I wanted to give you the highest numbers again, right out of the book that was printed here. And I think that's a good source reference. And just to give you some real good numbers as to what it looks, I was shocked myself when I saw half a million dollars. And I mean, you're probably talking twelve students? I mean, that's college education, I'm talking. We need to come up with some solution. We're attempting to do that for you as you ask us to do.
Well, we appreciate that, because we had a balanced budget a few weeks ago. Said, oh, great, we're going to have a balanced budget, very tiny bit of money extra. And then, we find out that we have a couple of extra students that could possibly be going to Norfolk. Well, there's sixty-seven thousand out of the budget, now we're negative.
Has that been, have they declared yet?
Well, we won't know until the end of May.
The end of April.
April?
If they've been accepted, and then we'll.
So, about a week and a half before our meeting, our town meeting, is when we'll know the. And of course, they have till the beginning of the school year to deny, to decide to stay in Millville.
Yeah. A couple of thoughts. In the event the communities, we have thirteen communities. And in fairness, we did the expansion in two thousand and one and added three new voc tech programs. There was strong encouragement from other finance committees to address out-of-district tuitions at that time, for different programs. Cosmetology was one of them at that time. But in any case, so, Millville's not alone in a request of this nature, although we certainly tried. We cannot add programs simply to reduce exposure of out-of-district tuitions. We have to add programs that have strong interest in students and strong job placement, or else the state won't let us open those programs. So, even though politically it might be nice, it has to have other factors for eligibility. If the communities are supportive of this, I assure you that I will also reach out to my colleagues at the schools that are currently recruiting students to the programs, to see whether or not we can establish stronger relationships to keep greater control of that. I'd also, you know, like to certainly indicate that as the Blackstone-Millville sister system, we have eleven feeder systems that we work with. Transitions to a new superintendent, Alan, colleague from Oxford. Certainly wish him the very best, and reaffirm my interest and our system's interest in working in parallel, in a partnership wherever possible relative to sharing resources or other kinds of things. Much more can be accomplished with people working together. And you can battle on a baseball diamond, or softball field, or anywhere else, but still, there's more in common, and I think more that can be accomplished. Sometimes it's shared professional development opportunities for staff or other kinds of exchanges that show respect and collaboration and maybe collaborative purchasing, if you will. So, we are looking to do some other things at all costs.
Great. On what we, I'll be handing, I'm not going to go over this with you, but I'm going to be handing this out. This has the basic expansion program. It gives you what your total cost is for, specifically for Millville. It answers any type of questions, question and answers are in here. We'd like to leave that to you folks, so that you help to support any questions that may come up after, that people may have. We also have here, do you want me to hand these out too?
Show us more background information.
Yeah.
What is that?
This is from the Millville Finance Committee, which I also sit on. And they give you a better understanding, I think, of how the whole process works with regional, and how it works with thirteen members. So, that hopefully would be good, again, information base for you if you have some questions. There's a lot of things in here that can provide for those answers. And be able to, hopefully, if you have anything beyond, let us know.
One comment. The way I heard that was that you're on the Millville Finance Committee. I think you mean the Valley Tech Budget Committee. Millville Finance Committee is one of the committees you're not on. That's a church.
He is on our Green Energy.
Otherwise, you're a volunteer.
One other thing I'm fairly proud of too, is we were, for the third time, just on Chronicle. And I'd like to give a thumb drive, as well as a disc for you folks to take a look at it. It does highlight, for the third time in twenty years, the achievements of Valley Tech, and basically a return investment. We're very proud of Chronicle picking our school. Of all schools, they could have, to come in and to highlight some things about the school, so.
Still can see the Bruins, if you watch that.
It's gonna take a long time to see that, but it's nice to be mentioned in there as well.
And Mr. Finn, when can we expect these will be going out to the residents? When will those be mailed?
The next five to ten days.
Oh, great, wonderful.
We'd like to try to get them out, keep, the most important thing, we think, is information. Someone who's educated, that has a good, and I, getting in the booth is up to you what you want to do. All we're trying to do is say, make sure you inform. And if you're informed, and you understand what the situations are, then it's up to you consciously what you want, where you want the town to go. We're very proud of the youngsters that have made it through the scholarship side, the nurse that has graduated. We think those are all added advantages to help the town. And I think, you know, with Dr. Fitzpatrick, it's been twenty-one years. It's been, it's been a tremendous transformation of that school. And it's something that we are very, very proud of. Any budget questions, or anybody have any questions that we may answer? I hope you don't mind that format, but I thought it was the most concise way, and I've done it prior, to let you know what's happening, okay? And that's, it looks as though the next couple of years going forward, that the, I do not see spikes in the, in the operational side. So, I think, you know, if you wanted to have placeholders for future hits, I would say right now, we're pretty comfortable that it looks like we're going to have about forty-three, forty-four, maybe forty-five children. Once we open up some of the other opportunities, you may have more kids that want to get involved because of veterinary. That could obviously be an offset to Norfolk Aggie. So, that's the game plan behind it. One other thing I did want to mention, this is not something we thought of the other night. This is something that this gentleman to my left here has been a champion of putting together a thoughtful business approach plan since I met him, this was one time ago, twenty-one years ago. And it is indeed a forward-thinking plan that he put forward. And this is the way we're going to do it. Because at the time I started with, right when Doc got there, I don't know if you folks remember, but we literally had a declining population. We literally had some eight-hundred-and-five kids, and it was going down to seven ninety-four, or something like that. So, obviously, some good things have happened to make this, and I think, by evidence of the fact that we had, how many candidates this year?
Oh, eight-hundred-and-fifty.
Eight-hundred-and-fifty-three, I think was the final total. Eight-hundred-and-fifty-three total applications for about two-hundred-and-ninety-six seats. So, it's, you've still got, I see, a lot of interest in coming to Valley Tech.
I want to plant, just plant one seed. We, the expansion, we were asked how many students in total, with three new programs after, they're all operational. And I identified two-hundred, isn't it? But the first one-hundred are targeted for students currently out of district. We don't want to, we don't seek to yank someone out, but there are some one-hundred students currently not being educated for vocational technical education from the thirteen towns. That is fifty percent of the expansion. So, there's some, some people have presented certain fear factors, that we're going to take this disproportionate number of students from a given town, all right, or even raid the local system. But in reality, may, hopefully, the new programs will be attractive to, say, the one-hundred students, or the next wave of one-hundred students who are looking to go someplace else.
Great. Any other questions at all?
Thank you. Great job.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your support, and appreciate the opportunity to come and present to you every year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, as in years past, I'm sure we'll see you on the twelfth.
Yes, may be well.
Great.
May be well.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have our first public forum. And are you here for the MAS Playground?
That was a gal by the name of Karen Colombo. She informed me that she would not be able to make it. At the last minute, she was held up at work. So, I will reschedule with her for one of the May meetings.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any correspondence myself tonight. Except, best of luck to the Bruins, that I do have. Next, we have appointments and resignations.
And as you recall, the board received, after the agenda had been posted two weeks ago, a resignation via email from the building inspector. So, I would just be asking you this evening to formally accept that resignation.
Your motion?
Motion to accept the resignation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. All right, and if we could just send a thank you letter out to Mr. Fitzpatrick for his services.
Did we get everything?
We did get a key.
Yes, we received the keys back.
It was UPS'd to us, and then, I guess Verizon is, who are you? Is going to be calling us to allow transfer of the money.
Very good.
Is what he informed me today, or yesterday, I'm sorry.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And then the tree warden position is one that is an elected position. However, the town clerk neglected to include that on the recent ballot. It was up for a three-year reelection. In conversations with town council, the suggested treatment for this is for the board to appoint the individual for a one-year term through the next election in two thousand and fifteen. And then on the two thousand and fifteen ballot, we'll have a two-year unexpired term on there. So, Keith Mercur was the tree warden, and he still is interested. So, my suggestion to the board is to appoint Mr. Mercur for one year through the two thousand and fifteen election.
All right, I may go?
Go ahead. To appoint Keith.
Oh, no, yeah, yeah.
The tree warden.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Helen, your report?
I just have two quick things.
Helen, you're going to send him a letter to saying that he's all set?
Yes, we will do that.
Thank you.
As we get every year from the Central Mass mosquito project, we get their district budget, which needs approval by the selectmen. This first goes through the Board of Health. The Board of Health met on April sixteenth and voted to support the budget, which for Millville, for FY fifteen, is eleven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. And that comes directly off the cherry sheet. So, if the board doesn't have any objectives, we would just be looking for a motion to support the FY fifteen mosquito control funding and authorize the chair to sign the certification form.
And nothing's changed, though? Policies or everything's the same?
No, everything's the same.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And the board has previously voted for the ninety-five thousand dollar note for the septic betterment loans. So, you don't have to revote this, but what you do have to now do is sign. So, there are five places that you will be signing later this evening. So, I just wanted to make public to anybody watching, you've already voted on this. So, you don't need to revote it. So, what you're signing isn't something that's being done, you know, secretly. It's already been done, and you'll be signing that later this evening. And that's all I have.
Excellent. Okay. All right, next, next we have old business, we have Mark's Garage. So, Mr. Finn... We have Mark's Garage, so Mr. Fernandez.
Wanna thank you all for your time. Lot of things you guys gotta go through over here. It's always informative to hear these things you have to listen to, a lot of information to digest. I don't know where to begin. Some of the things you guys talk about, how to spend the town's money. I just, you know, before I get going, I mean, you guys hear from the lawyer? The attorney?
What's the status?
I spoke with him earlier today and he was in the process of drafting his opinion as we were speaking on the telephone. So I should have that in the morning.
Should I wait? Well, what I wanted to do, last time I didn't do it, I just wanted to hand you out because, you know, it seemed like each one of you, maybe my assistant here, my lovely assistant, can give you each one. We can walk around, sorry. Why don't you walk around and give them each one? You know, 'cause as we already mentioned, you know, as it came up, the packet just has information that we had to research to find out why Mark's Garage found itself in this position all of a sudden after fifteen years. And information originally started, the only thing I don't have any documentation of is Mr. Fitzpatrick. He's the first one I was directed to and we gave him a folder full of information that, you know, he just said, he doesn't know what happened to it. I mean, that happens, he's a busy guy, he only works part-time, so that information is gone. But we didn't hear from him. And then Helen had sent us a, some information, that's documented in there in the minutes about, it might have been August or July, you know, what's the status? I, you know, what do you, you know, have you done anything? And at that point, we had made a phone call to Mr. Fitzpatrick and he mentioned that we should talk to someone in zoning on planning. So at that point, we, in the minutes, we talked to, what's his name, Mulvey? Mr. Mulvey, who's the chair?
Yeah.
And he said that he would look into it. And also there's some minutes or some Helen talking to Mr. Mulvey, asking what the status was. And so at that point, 'cause we did contact him and he stated that he would look into it. And so between Mr. Fitzpatrick and Mr. Mulvey, there was never any response back to us. And I think Helen mentioned too, that he never responded back to you. So, so come December, it was, you know, we didn't really know what to do. 'Cause there was no response back to us. 'Cause there was, this is Dean, is it Dean Wing? And she had mentioned like, oh, you did something? It's like, yeah, we did do something. We contacted, you know, who we felt, well, the direction that we were given to contact. And as Helen had mentioned too, she hadn't got any information back from any of these, this department. Only through our own research, it just seemed that it wasn't something that they normally handle, an existing business. You know, what do we do? What are you asking us to do with a pre-existing business? You know, what's the direction? You know, and only in our conversation, 'cause we would call and they were like, I don't know, it's not typical, that's not what we handle. We handle someone who doesn't have a business, who wants to get into business. So that's where we were left. And then only after, and only beginning year did we start talking to Joe Ladin about the situation. And he felt the same way. He didn't really know what direction to go. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that as you, you know, we're all on the same page. Because just as, you know, if I make a mention, Ms. Dean Wing, she's, you know, like, wow, you did something? I didn't think you did anything. It's like, well, we did do things, you know, other than what we, we knew. So we just made a packet of information, 'cause that seemed like the only direction we had mentioned there. And in that packet, you'll see dates as far as nineteen-seventy-five, when Joe built the, the, 'cause they used to work out of a small garage, him and his father, years earlier. And then in seventy-five, he built the new garage. And as you go through the information, there's, the only information, because a lot of the records were destroyed, we found an article in the Wintucket Call that says, there were actually twelve, in nineteen-ninety-two, there were twelve Class Two licenses. I was kind of surprised about that. And there was an issue about issuing these licenses, the, the board wanted some, them to do some things. But it mentions Joe Sherrick, Sherrick's Garage in nineteen-ninety-two. So that actually, but actually, I know that's not seventy-seven, but that's twenty-two years in business with a Class Two license. And I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, Mark's Garage didn't do anything wrong. I bought a pre-existing business and, you know, it's already been mentioned, I talked to people in planning, that, that the board's aware of, there's many businesses that fall in these areas that would seem to have the same situation that we have when someone says, well, prove it. You know, or why are you here? You know, and, you know, we don't wanna single anybody out, you know? Although it seems like we've been singled out. We don't wanna single anybody out, but it's just, you know, if you, I think it's easy to put yourself in my position if you're in business and someone says you're not today. Wait a minute, you can't do that. You know, if you do electrical work or contracting work and so on, so you cannot be in business today. You know, it's like, really? That easy? I know it hasn't been easy for me, because my business is, concentrates on selling cars. And, you know, I think unless you're involved in that type of business, it actually changes. You wouldn't think it changes over time, but it does change with new car sales, incentives, what people do, the internet. It is a little challenging to kind of keep things under control. You know, and I, I had mentioned that, you know, I wanted the board to vote, because it just seemed like I was never gonna get a response. Because in that, those minutes, you know, two thousand and twelve, when it came up between the, of the garage, that it was gonna give into council. So two thousand and twelve to today, that's, that's quite a long time. So just from my perspective, I mean, if that's, if he's gonna give a response, I appreciate that. I can wait, you know, but I still wanted to make sure we were here today, to make sure you guys had some of the, the information that we researched. And thank you for your time. Any questions though? No questions? No questions?
Nothing.
All right.
Nothing, we're just waiting for the lawyer.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna clarify for Mr. Fernandez, that the legal request back in two thousand and twelve wasn't for Mark's Garage, it was for Zeno's.
Yeah.
So that didn't have anything to do with it.
In the, in the packets that I gave you, it's mentioned two garages.
Right, there were two, but that was the year, that December, you got the full license in two thousand and thirteen, a provisional license. So we didn't consult with Legal with respect to yours, it was Zeno's.
'Cause Dave Zeno won.
In the minutes, you, you can read it, it actually says, you know, there's a legal question with two garages.
Right.
So.
But the, the reason we had to get legal is Dave Zeno wanted a Class Two license, although never had. And we had to deny him that because of Legal's report.
Well, it ended up actually being granted and then there was a cease and desist put on it.
Yeah, we had to take it back. After, after Legal did their homework, we had made a mistake and we had to.
Yeah, the bylaw, you know, I had to research it, just like, I don't know, you guys probably researched it. I got a copy of the bylaw. You know, it's pretty specific on that matter, so it wasn't something that, you know, when it says N for no, that means it's not even up for questioning. And that's why when I mentioned before, when it comes to legal, because there's other businesses, it would actually fall into the N. So, you know, making sure you had, you asked the right question or, and then, you know, I think my situation, just, I hate to say I'm different, because, you know, only because, you know, I have a Class Two for fifteen years. It was pre-existing, I have evidence of that. And, you know, he was there fifty years in business, but. I mean, well, that's nice to know that I'm gonna get a response. So I'll see you next week, is it next week?
Uh, two, uh, two weeks is May, uh, May third, I believe is, May fifth, Monday, May fifth is the next meeting. Quick question, is, is anything else, anything in here that you did not previously give to the zoning enforcement officer, anything new?
Yeah, a lot of it was new, only because what he said to us originally, we gave him. If he would've said he wanted more at that time, I would've gave him more. But we never got a response. We gave him information and only later on in December, when we didn't, 'cause we, in July or August, whatever, when we got in contact with Mr. Mulvey, then it became, well, you need a little more information. You need, you need more, you need to.
Well, it's all there now, right?
Right, everything that we could find, you know, without going through.
Okay.
'Cause we go through that microtape stuff at the city. It takes like a long time.
And have you met at all with our interim building inspector? Mr. Emmery?
Yes, just, yeah, briefly, yeah.
So he's, does he have a copy of this?
No, he doesn't.
He doesn't? Okay, but is he familiar with the situation?
Joe spoke to him, because when, that day, when I came in, I talked to Joe and, and the building inspector, and then he said he would touch base with him. He said before they left, they could talk about the situation. So, I mean, it'd probably be nice to have him have a copy of that.
I was just gonna recommend that if you have time Wednesday night, he's here from about five-thirty till seven-thirty.
Okay, yeah, good.
Stop in and see him. If your, if your feeling is that this packet does contain evidence of a pre-existing Class Two, you know, he should see this. My understanding from Mr. Fitzpatrick is that the evidence and documentation that you had provided did not qualify for that. So if your content is that it does, I suggest you see him.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the same copy, what you have, I'll give to him.
Yeah, I'm happy to make a copy of it too and give it to him to save you the problem, but, yeah, I'll.
Because I did speak to him, he, he kind of understands the situation, he doesn't have documentation of what the situation would, is. And, but we did mention, but we already know that a lot of documents were destroyed and you can't go back to that time period. And, you know, even in the Wintucket Call, just to make mention, it was, it's interesting because, only because it was like an issue, because they just mentioned sometimes the same way passing, like the minutes do, they sign the licenses.
Okay, yeah.
You know, they don't say who got the licenses. The only time they mention in the minutes is that if someone tried to get a license, so and so came to get a license, it was granted or, you know, was denied. And that was, you know, going on. But when they, when license was signed, it just said that board met, they signed the class, they signed the licenses, they signed the Class Two licenses.
So we've had a change in the guard up there, so we should. Go take a visit upstairs.
Yeah.
I just have one, one question.
Yes.
Is this business applicable, or is chapter one-forty of Mass General Law applicable, section fifty-nine, terms of bonding and that kind of thing?
You say bonding?
Yeah.
I mean, as far as the license?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, and only like what Joe Ladin had mentioned too, about the, the Mass law, we speak of the, the Mass law, you know, the interpretation, like he, he mentioned like how he views that law. Because, you know, having, you know, like someone came to you for a license, just the way he said the Millville's is written. But the Mass law allows for things like someone coming, like this other business, you know? But it's a, it's a way it's written, it's, and when he's just put, no. But the Mass law doesn't say it that way. Mass law says if you have something that's there and they, you know, like a, someone's selling sandwiches and they wanna sell pizzas too, you go, eh, it's the same thing, you know? And, but they said just the way the Mass, uh, the Millville law is written, it's, it's kind of tough for all these, that's where the issue comes with any business. They're there, they're doing something, and then it's just, it's too cut and dried with the Mass law isn't like that. And I think that's what they're looking at.
You're gonna have to be a little bit more patient and we will get back to you, 'cause there's nothing more we can do at this time.
So tomorrow, when we do hear from the lawyer, can we, if it is all set and there are no issues, we're not able to?
We have to hear from the lawyer, that's all we're gonna say at this time. We don't know which direction we're gonna go.
I understand that, but we can't say that if it is a go, that yes, you'll sign the license and we'll have it tomorrow.
No, they only meet every, twice.
Well, I read in the minutes that they can approve something and just make it okay and use something it or make somebody sign it and that's it. And is it done there?
And that, but that all depends on a, on the lawyer's report tomorrow.
Oh, absolutely, of course. But if the lawyer's recommendation is it's all set, can we come tomorrow to pick up the license?
No one's here to sign it.
No.
But they have, you, I read in the minutes that.
No, we cannot, because it won't be a full board, it's gotta be posted, you just can't bring a board in to sign things. We get the letter tomorrow and then we would need forty-eight business hours to post a meeting to have. But in the meantime, it would take Helen probably twenty-four hours to get in touch with each of us individually to, to set a date up. Then we'd have to post it. So it'll be at least a week before we would actually have another meeting if that was, if that was the route we chose to.
It's just tough when we have people calling us to buy cars.
Yeah.
People that we've had over the years, customers, it's hard to just say, well, do you want the long story or the short one? I wanna thank you for your time, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry.
No, no problem, thank you, have a good night.
Now, next we have building department positions. So we need to post a assistant and a building inspector and also a building commissioner's position. And the assistant only will be getting paid as, as in past years through stipend. But whatever the assistant would get for, for any, if he did a long-term cover for the inspector, the commissioner, part of his stipend would be deducted and given to the assistant. So it's not gonna be an additional cost at the time. And then if he, if the assistant does an inspection or the commissioner does an inspection, it's going to be a standard inspection fee and that's not in any addition to the town's budget also, so.
Right, so just for, for clarification, the assistant, I guess Mass General Law no longer recognizes assistant building inspector. So we're calling that building inspector, local building inspector. And then building commissioner would be the main. So we used to have building inspector and assistant building inspector, that's not recognized. Now it's local building inspector and building commissioner would be the titles.
Sounds better.
No, we gotta post it for.
Yeah, this is, the, the motion I'd be looking for is to post the two positions.
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And how long is that gonna post for?
Um, we will, it's up to the board, I can either post them just internally. I can publish it in the newspaper. Um, there are many different avenues we can, we can go to, to publish that. Take as much or as little time as you'd like. Generally, we'd like to keep it out there for at least a week.
I would go for a weekend. I don't think we need to put it in the newspaper, our website.
Website.
And cable access, I think is more sufficient.
And usually what I'll do is I'll send an email out to many of the surrounding towns and
Yeah.
we get some, we get bites that way as well, from individuals who might already be doing one town.
Nobody from Worcester or Boston's gonna want this job.
No, that's right.
Not for, you know, one day a week for just a few dollars, so. Okay. All right, so next we have the internal email policy. So back in January, if everyone remembers, I, I, I asked for some adjustments on how we do certain emails, so. This is pretty much what we had discussed. I can't remember the meetings, but at the, at the meeting that we did discuss it, this is how we chose to, to blind copy us with, so it's not like.
I'll make a motion to approve the policies.
Excellent. I'll second that motion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. I'm just putting my junk away, that's all.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, initially, we were going to go over the budget one more time, but after the last meeting with the finance committee, it was decided it could wait until the next joint meeting on April thirtieth. So there's nothing as far as budget amendments that the board needs to review this evening. That will all be done on April thirtieth.
That's fine with me.
Okay, but the warrants, very important, we do need to sign this evening, because we do need to get those published and posted by the constable this week.
How are the corrections?
Yes.
There was no misspelling, Helen. So that was good, but there's just a few adjustments.
Yep, what we want to do, this is the, the annual that I'm passing out to you now.
Mm-hmm.
The board went over this last Monday evening. Um, we want to vote to reaffirm all the votes taken that evening.
Yep.
And approve the warrant as a whole. We went through it, if you recall, article by article.
Right.
Um, so as you voted, has been recorded under the recommendations. And the finance committee during their own meeting voted as well, so those. Um, and the finance committee during their own meeting, um, voted as well, so those have all been recorded.
Okay.
And the motion would be to sign two originals.
Can I just point of work, talk about very quickly?
Sure.
Would there be some discussion, open forum, to talk about, uh, adding a warrant article?
Nope.
None tonight?
None, nope. Absolutely not. Let me read, let me read, let me read you this. Let me read you this, this is what's happening in this thing. So perhaps the school committee needs to be in Boston, not in Millville, okay? Because the, the minority leader Brad Jones offered two amendments to, to strike the language of the bill making local aid and educational aid and EBT amendments a non-game, non-game to the budget. So in other words, uh, Brad Jones, the minority leader, wants to talk about increasing local aid as, uh, for local aid and for chapter seventy. Unanimously, the Democratic Party voted a hundred and seventeen to twenty-nine to not include that in this month's budget talks. So, in other words, they're saying we will not increase chapter seventy again and cha, and local aid again. So Mr. Carrolls found the loophole and he did find a way to, to talk about increasing library aid, senior aid, veterans' aid and, and four other items by five percent. Whether it passes or not, that's up to those hundred and seventeen Democrats.
Yeah, that, that isn't what I was talking about.
Okay, so, I know.
That isn't what I was talking about.
What, what warrant would you like to add?
Well, we would like to at least talk about publicly adding a warrant, an override warrant to fund, to fund schools.
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
That, that has chapter seventy, that, that, I'm talking with Tom Billbo.
Well, right, and I'm telling you right now, the reason why Millville has no money and the school has no money is Beacon Hill. It is Beacon Hill, it's been Beacon Hill, and, and we have a very big problem in Beacon Hill that, and it proves that one-party government is a failure, and that's why Massachusetts fails this country. We're forty-six in places to do business, okay?
That has nothing to do with.
That does have something to do with the budget in this town and in Blackstone and in every other town. When they keep cutting local seventy-eight and local aid.
Do you, do you want us to come up there?
No, no, I don't. You're not on the agenda.
Okay, so during public forum, can people come up there? Because I think the, the main issue here is the governing board of Millville is choosing not to do an override to fund the school.
We just did an override to be on a ballot for the six hundred thousand.
Say that publicly, that's all, because the parents, the five hundred and fifty kids of Millville
Yeah.
that go to the BMR public schools, okay, they deserve to have a voice, that's all. And those parents, they deserve to have a voice. So if you're saying that you don't wanna do that as the governing board of Millville, please say that publicly.
What is the plan of Blackstone Millville School District to spend an extra one point six million, is it?
It's not extra.
Five.
It's not extra.
There's eighteen percent increase.
It's not an eighteen percent increase.
Joe? It's eighteen point four actually, isn't it?
You, you're talking about assessments.
Yeah.
We're not talking about the budget. The budget is a three point six four percent increase.
And we, and we have no.
You're talking about assessments.
We have no.
Make sure that's clear when you're talking to the public.
Wait a minute, this is my room.
That's fine.
Don't overtalk me.
Okay, that's fine, I don't want you to do that.
You are. And we gave you a lot of respect at your meeting, you'll give it to me here.
I absolutely will. So to just.
What I'm saying is the state is, is requesting that we pay roughly two point four million to the school? Okay? And we don't have, you just heard me tell Valley Tech, we don't have any extra money. We had a balanced budget. We have two kids that may go, two extra kids that may go to Norfolk. That sixty-seven thousand dollars puts us in the red in our checkbook, okay? So the way I do my budget at my house is you don't increase your budget in other places when you're already in the red. We cannot, we'd love to, nothing more important, but you know what? Unlike your committee, we have more to worry about than just the children, and we do worry about the children. Okay, but we also have to worry about the seniors that have spent their life putting into this town. We have to worry about the kids that have already put their children through, through the, through the town of this, of, of this school district, all right? What they've already put into it. What are they supposed to do, just move because they can't afford to live in Millville anymore?
Can we speak, Colonel, they, what, we're, we are asking for the right for the voters to make the decision. Rather than us or you or, we, we just want on the ballot for the voters of the town of Millville to make the decision. Rather than you or I.
Fair, you, you don't have to agree with it, you don't have to agree with override. Your job as a governing board is to put it out there to have the, the Millville citizens as a voice, that's all. And if it get voted down there, it can absolutely be voted down there. But that, that, that's all we're saying, and if you're saying you don't want to do that, say that to the public, okay? Because the citizens of Millville owe, you definitely owe that to them. You owe that to them.
I have, I have a responsibility to every group of, of, of citizens in this. We, we are this close to finally recertifying our, our, our library. We're this close to, to getting the, the senior center back on, on track. And that has all, and the library and the senior center has been working mainly on donations. Alls we've been supporting is the physical buildings. All right? They've been working hard, we've been working hard to balance a budget, help those people out, the seniors, the kids that are, that are not fortunate enough to have internet and whatnot at home to use the library. Uh, where school libraries are only open during school hours, this library gives them that extra, um, learning tool. And, and we're committed to all these groups of people. And we've already put on a ballot, well, we're, we're going to have the, get the override of over six hundred thousand for the roof, which is definitely needed, and I don't, I'm not gonna dispute that. We need to, we need to put into the, to the education of our kids as much as we possibly can, but at this time, we know as a responsible, as the responsible people for the budget of this town, we don't have the money. And how can we ask a town with, which has a very high population of senior citizens to come up with another four hundred thousand dollars? Tell me how.
Well, we, we're just listening to the BBT presentation and they, they work down to, they're looking for a dollar fifty-three per student per day.
Mm-hmm.
And what are you seeing on that, so it can be approved, as far as you know?
That'll get approved.
Because at the same half, you'd be giving BMR additional hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. If we got a hundred, one dollar fifty-two cents times our five hundred and fourteen kids, times our many days.
Yeah.
That would be additional hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in additional investment.
We don't have.
Like, if, if you don't have it for BMR, why do you have it for BBT?
We.
Wait, you asked for four hundred thousand dollars.
They're, they're, yeah, they're not asking for four hundred thousand dollars.
We're, they're asking us for seven thousand.
I don't care, we do not have four hundred thousand dollars to give to Blackstone Millville, we don't have it.
Which, which is why we're asking.
Blackstone Valley Tech.
And do what, place it, let the people vote yes, and then all of a sudden, we're in, we, we got half of the seniors in this place moving out because they can't afford, living here? We don't have that luxury as selectmen or the finance committee, we not gonna do that to the people, cause we have a bigger plate. We have to think of everybody, even the children. What you need to do is go back and sharpen your pencil and find out where you can improve in different things. Come on now, we did it, we're down to bare bones. And you people keep on asking for more and more money, which we don't have. And what you're saying is do a proposition two and a half, so we can get more money. And we also want a new roof on there, we're gonna give you the new roof, cause the people said, okay, all right?
The roof was requested by you. You, you know, the town's millbill hired a firm to do an assessment of all the property.
That's right, and we don't want the school to go down for the best interest of children, okay? I got the floor. So what I'm saying to you is this, we're doing the best I, we can, and the thing is, is you people don't agree, you wanna put it on a ballot, so the people have the right to vote for more money, which we don't have, and put the seniors in the poorhouse and knock out the library, knock out the senior center, knock out the police station, knock out the fire station, you're gonna devastate this whole town by doing that. You need to rethink your thoughts, that's what this board is asking, that's what the finance committee is asking, that's what Blackstone Finance Committee, and that's what the selectmen apply, they're asking you to rethink your thoughts when you come up with numbers, and you're not. You come up with four hundred thousand dollars and we're ac- absolutely, where do we come up with it? We don't have the answers, you say, well, let's just vote on it, and they say yes. They say yes, and then what do you do? You just devastated the, uh, basically half of Millville with the seniors, and you can live with that? I'm sorry, I cannot.
I, I'm not. The other half will believe it, the parents and kids will believe it. So, you know, again, you can shake your head, okay, and do whatever you want there, and we know it's painful, believe me, but.
More than you can imagine.
Yeah, oh, well, okay. Um, however, we're, we're at a minimum budget for the last ten years, okay? You haven't given a dime over the minimum of what Boston has told you to give.
That's right.
We've written the law, we can't do it anymore. Three hundred thousand walked out the door last year, you can shake your head, okay? Six hundred thousand go out this year, okay? BBT will take a few more kids, okay, which are a wonderful program, okay? Not, not that they want one iota, you should give them a buck for a year per day, okay? Because they, they have a great wonderful plan, okay? But the five hundred and fifty Millville kids, okay, that'll be going to other channels, other public schools, okay? Because it's gonna be thirty kids in a classroom at the elementary school. At the middle school and the high school, it, we're gonna be cutting eight teachers to get to the other four hundred thousand that we need to get to, okay? So what this'll do will devastate both communities for the next ten years, okay? So as long as you wanna say publicly that you don't wanna give it to the citizens of Millville, I got no problem with it.
I'm not gonna say that.
I got no problem, that is what you're saying.
I know what I'm saying.
No, what we're saying publicly, hold on, John, what we're saying publicly is not that we're not gonna give to the citizens, we're not taking from them anymore.
You're not giving them the chance to vote.
Listen.
Whether they want that to be funded.
Listen, just so you know, this year, Massachusetts raised our taxes five hundred million dollars, okay? That comes out of your pay, that comes out of your real estate, that comes out of everything. They've decreased local aid, they've decreased chapter seventy, they've decreased everything. They give, they take more and give less, and it's time, we need to start fighting Boston. Don't come to Millville and Blackstone and fight us for money. Go fight Boston and tell them to stop the mandated unfunded projects that they have, okay? That's where all our money's going, and unfortunately, we have no choice for that matter, but we do have a choice whether to, whether to increase this. And, and if we don't put a stamp and we keep doing overrides, Boston's gonna say, well, they did another override, so let's, let's give it to them again next year. Does anybody understand what's going on out there at all? Or do we all just have blinders on? It seems like the school committee has a blinders on and.
Oh, 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 wait, wait a minute.
We're here too. This is only my taxes, Steve's taxes, we're not asking for this and not being part of this community. Th- this is where my kids go to school.
Well, I get an awful lot more phone calls from people, I get calls from people that have kids in the school that say, we can't do this, we can't do this. We can't afford it.
And they can vote, they can vote, they can vote.
This, this real, the whole thing is really about competition. And we, we will admit, one of our big problems is the added district. Kids go into BBT, kids do Mont Saint Charles, Whiteman, you name it, lots of options. And one of the reasons is their programs are better funded. As Dr. Fitzpatrick came here tonight, he's adding three programs, which will siphon a few more kids away from Blackstone Millville. So the strong will get stronger and we will get weaker, we'll be impacted even more, we'll have less kids. One of the reasons our chapter seventy has been pretty flat is our enrollment has not been going up. It's been flat or sinking a little bit. Where have they been going? Other places. Why? Because they're more attractive. It's not that simple, but why? Because they're getting more money. And he sat here tonight and asked you for a dollar fifty-three per kid, per day, and you just said you're gonna give that to them.
Yeah.
And, and the only thing, what, the only thing we're asking is for the opportunity to present to the voters and let the voters say, no. I understand you're saying that the, the schools did not close the library, the schools did not close the senior center.
No, but.
When, 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 when I was, when I was in town years ago, we, we said, we don't have a spending problem, we have a revenue problem.
Yeah, we do have a revenue problem.
But you're saying, so we need to sharpen our pencil, we don't have a spending problem, we have a revenue problem.
What would you say was three something?
So we are asking you for more revenue.
What are you asking, three, three something?
Our, our chemistry, we say.
Three, what was your, what was your thing, what was that, Joe, three?
Three point four.
Three point four. All we get is twenty-five percent, so you get more than we get.
Okay, I, I was, I was listening to Dr. Fitzpatrick today. In twenty twelve, Millville's cost per student was fifty-nine eighty-four. In four years, it's risen to seventy-one seventy. That's nineteen point eight percent increase over four years. Nineteen point eight over four years. We're asking for three point eight four, which is less than this.
He's not asking for four hundred thousand dollars either.
He's only, he only has forty-five.
The state, the state recommends two point four million, forget the pennies, I mean, we know there's extra pennies in there, all right? That's what they want us to give, and we gladly given it. You want, you're asking.
You have to.
Yeah, and we're gladly, and we're happy to do it.
Right.
All right? You're asking for an additional, on top of the two point four million, an additional four hundred thousand. Well, I'm, I'm, I may have gone to Valley Tech and, and I'm, I'm very good at math, but that's not three point four percent. You add four, you take four hundred thousand and compare it to two point four million, that is not a three percent increase.
It's a three percent increase in our total budget. It's not your assessment or Blackstone's assessment, that's split based on the, the kids that are attending the school.
But our contribution is a.
Our contribution.
Our additional contribution is eighteen point four percent. Tell the truth. Don't put smoke and mirrors out to the voters.
That's not what Blackstone millville, that is what the state of Massachusetts said your assessment is, that is not our budget. That is repayment for the kids that are attending the school, based on the state of Massachusetts.
What was our, our, our contribution to the school last year, Ellen?
I don't have, I don't have.
If it was, like, the contribution we're asking for this year?
Mm-hmm.
Two million, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Last year, two million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Okay.
We have three thousand dollars increase.
Okay, and you're asking for an extra four hundred thousand this year.
And we're asking for as much as four hundred.
As much as.
Is, is there a lesser number that you're willing to?
There's a budget on that.
Our budget is in the red.
Doing anything to do it.
We have no money.
Doing anything to do it. The other thing you're giving out is, for the past ten years, the school district has taken out an E and D, like Dr. Fitzpatrick does as well, okay? About four million dollars over the last ten years, okay? This year, we can't do it, we're bare bones.
I understand.
That's, that's the quagmire.
I understand.
So I'm saying we're asking for an additional four hundred thousand dollars. All we're asking for is a modest increase in our operating budget to continue to move forward, okay? If you don't agree with that, that's fine, that's fine, okay? Some of those are mandated, it's a six point six percent increase in special ed, we have no choice about that, okay? The operating budget total is three point six, okay? And Joe's been there all year, Rich has been there in a few meetings, we were talking about this in October. I was sending you stuff in October through Helen, emails about the forecast that's gonna happen. So to say you're just getting it right now, the gap is bigger, believe me, okay? We know that, but you've been informed, I don't wanna hear that you haven't been informed all year.
Oh, we've been informed, that we've known all year that we were gonna be in trouble this budget season, and there's nothing we can do about it.
Then, then, that's what I want you to say publicly then, there's nothing you can do about it, you don't wanna put it to the voters, that's fine, say that and leave. I got no problem with that, that's honest, that's authentic.
So what?
But when the parents come and, and say, I got thirty kids in a class, I'm gonna say, go talk to the town of Millville, go talk to the town of Blackstone, because they're the voters.
So, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
What is the procedure to do what they ask?
My understanding is they're asking for a two and a half, proposition two and a half warrant article on the annual town meeting warrant.
And that takes our blood to do that.
That can be placed on there by, um, before the warrant had closed.
Right.
By another department or by a citizen's petition. Once the warrant is closed, certainly the board of selectmen has the option to open the warrant as you own the warrant.
Okay.
Um, usually placing a two and a half override question on the warrant comes from a recommendation from the finance committee. The finance committee, to my knowledge, has not recommended that, nor has there been discussion among this board to include a warrant article. So there's been no motion made.
So protocol has not been followed here. Is that a fair statement?
That's right.
Is that a fair statement? Okay. Helen just laid it out how that was also supposed to happen, if you guys have known this for a long time?
No, we, we, we have known.
Yeah, oh, we've all known, we don't know.
But the warrant closed March seventeenth, correct?
That's right.
So we had not, why would we go above?
We didn't celebrate a budget.
Why would we go above FinCom's head and ask you to put an override and not give our town the chance to, to do the budgeting? To me, that, I said it to you last week with FinCom, you, it wouldn't look right. And I didn't mean it wouldn't look right, because we're asking for the budget. And I didn't mean it wouldn't look right because we're asking for the budget. It wouldn't look right because we need to give the town a chance to fund the budget as proposed. We hadn't even, we hadn't even certified our budget. So how by March seventeenth would we come to you and ask for an override? It's not possible date-wise.
Okay.
So we didn't have to depend on FinCom. I was here last Wednesday with them. We have, I was told to come here tonight to ask for you to reopen that warrant. Because it is a passive deadline for us. It is not something we can do.
That's correct, because it was, at our meeting, that was the only path forward to do what they were trying to do, was to have, because the selectmen on the warrant is how it's...
That's right, and I, I know that.
That's the only way.
I've known that since March seventeenth.
But please recognize that, that on March seventeenth, there's no way that we could've gone over anyone's head. That would be very disrespectful, first of all, to Fin, Finance Committee and the board of selectmen. Why would we, why would we jump the gun and assume that our budget is not going to be recommended by the town?
We should meet.
So, so what, what do you propose, what do you propose that the, that the seniors do if this override goes through?
Well, there, there are options.
Should they move out of town, go to Franklin, or no fit or something?
There are options. For example, I, I teach up in Northridge. There's a three million dollar override going right down the dollar in Northridge. They're having a waiver aimed at sixty-five. As an example. Well, what is, what is it? I'm, I'm not sure the procedure to get that done, but truly, this, this isn't happening.
So the, so the families with kids that are struggling because they're laid off, or they got hours cut at work, uh, I know this doesn't happen to teachers, but to, to the, to the, to the, um, public sect, I mean, the private sector people have been taking cuts in healthcare, cuts in pay, cuts in hours, maybe not in pay. Okay, but one way or the other, at the end of the week, their pay's cut. Their insurance benefits have been changed, all right? Me personally, I pay an extra two hundred and forty dollars a month now in healthcare, okay? I don't have the same hours I used to have, okay? That's me. And you know what? I have the ability with, between my trade and between the, the little farm that I have to bring extra money in. But there're not a lot of fortunate people like that in this town or any other town that can do that.
But the, the one, one thing we're looking at right now, if, I understand the situation, I was on FinCom, I know everything you're saying is true. I'm not disputing any word there. What I'm saying now is, if the budget were to go through as is right now with no override and no additional contribution, there will be significant layoffs in Blackstone Millville.
Along with significant class size increases. So everything you've just said applies to me too. And I sit here on this committee, I have four kids. I have four kids that are in that building in this town. My husband's hourly has been cut, his overtime is gone. And we still have to take care of our four kids and their school still has to operate. You, as a parent, you find a way to do it. If it's not gonna happen in that building, parents are going to send them, you're, you're saying, what are our seniors going to do? They're going to move. Guess what's going to happen if it's the opposite? The kids are going to be school choice to our neighboring towns. And that is going to put us in more of a crisis going forward.
So clearly, we're all in a tough spot, right?
We are, we're in a tough spot.
We are. So all we are asking for is for the town, town members to be able to make that vote and not just the people sitting at this table. It is only fair as a taxpayer to this town that we get to come in here and, and place our vote on a ballot, whether or not they want to fund the school budget or not.
And as I was saying earlier, there will, if the budget goes through as is, there will be significant layoffs. I would hate, if I was a teacher and I got a layoff notice, that the school committee did not fight for me. All we're saying is, but before we lay people off, we want at least give the voters the opportunity to say yes or no.
When's the last time the teachers didn't get a raise? Last contract? Because we made a contract last year with our firefighters. Zero, 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 that's their three increases.
Well, did, did you hear what Dr. Fitzpatrick said? He, he was talking about, I think, his grant writer, two and a half percent raise?
But, but if, but if, but if their grants equal two point two million roughly this year, I would have to say his pay's justified, isn't it?
So it's okay for him to get a two and a half percent raise?
He's a grant writer, it was in his grant. Like you said, two point something, you're gonna dispute that? The guy's making two point something, you're gonna dispute it?
Well, well, if you're talking about cuts.
Well, what, what, we asked, we asked you a question.
Sure.
You didn't answer it, you're going right around it. When's the last time the teachers didn't get a raise?
I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Exactly.
But, but, what I'm saying is, this past year, we've operated in interim superintendent and no assistant superintendent. One of the duties of an assistant superintendent is grant writer. So I, so I would say a similar thing to you, you're saying, well, their grant writer has more than made up his salary. Well, you don't want us to raise anything. One thing we wanna add is assistant superintendent, who'll be writing grants who no doubt will more than bring any salary in grants. But if you wanna walk around any money on the table, my opinion, that would have to be a decision. But, but again, I'm, I'm just looking for the chance for the voters to say no before we have to make significant cuts and lay people off and back over.
It appears to me that the way we're going, we're, on the town side, we're on a downward spiral as well as on the education side, the district side. Uh, and if, if you believe the, the NASDAQ report, in the next ten years, school enrollment for this district will decrease by approximately twenty-five percent. Fewer students. Overhead doesn't, isn't proportionally, uh, doesn't reduce proportionally with, with the student count. So, there'll be pressures on chapter seventy. Uh, and it, it's, it's a no win. We're, we're a tailspin down. Personally, I, I feel that, uh, you know, I'm, I'm retired, I'm, I'm fixed. I love kids. And I wanna see the, the district thrive, and I wanna see the town thrive. We need to come up with some solutions here. But basically, right now, the way the budget stands, our stabilization is at two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, period. And there's no extra. And I, I'm disappointed that, you know, that we're going this way. And I would like, truly like to see if it's going to Boston on the twenty-ninth. Now, I, I spoke with our town accountant today and, uh, basically, the, the only solution to the town problem would be to effect an override, but that impacts us negatively in other ways.
That's right. Absolutely right.
Mr. Chairman?
You can't just, you can't just keep putting a Band-Aid on, on the problem. We gotta go to the source, and that's Boston. Mr. Chairman?
We've been meeting with the school committee since January. Our FinCom committee in town here has been meeting since, since January.
Rich, can you talk to, because you are chairman of the finance committee, please?
The two committees, uh, have been meeting, uh, and we recognize the problem. We recognize the minimum contribution isn't enough. I don't think there's anybody in this room that agrees.
I agree one hundred percent.
There isn't enough money in free cash or wiping out the stabilization fund to make up a requirement from what they need. It, it, it's really bad business to use a stabilization account for operations.
It is.
It really doesn't.
Bad business to use E and D to run a school.
Yeah, exactly. What happens next year?
Same, same bound.
What happens next year?
As we have, as have we.
The, the only thing to do is an override. But you also have to look at what we have now in, in the, in the pipeline. We've got an override already for, for the trash, the taxpayers. We've got a roof on the elementary school and a roof on the high school that are coming due, and that hasn't hit the taxpayers yet. Now, if we add this one, that's an additional burden on top of that.
We still don't know what this building's...
Well, this is another one.
It's part of a five-year capital plan that will be discussing.
The list goes on and on. I'm not sure if the voters can absorb any more debt, and that's...
That's what, that's what we're, that's what we're trying to say. I mean, we're not against a school. I mean, I, I wouldn't be as successful as I am personally and my wife as we are without school, you know? Uh, my two, my, my two kids, all right, very successful because of school. Because of, and one was all BMR, one was BMR and Valley Tech. They're both very successful and, um, and I'll leave it at that. So I'm not against it. I mean, I'm not hoping in the fu- near future, but I'm gonna have grandchildren eventually. Uh, and I don't want, and I want, and it aggravates me when I see that China and all these other countries are, are exceeding us, and it hurts. Uh, and, and we're making that comeback now, but, and, and I want that to continue. But, um, I, I don't know. We just, we just, as, we, you guys have your budget and we have our budget, and our budget includes A, B, and C. Yours includes, you know, C, D, and F, and, uh, you know, all of us have the children, which is C. And then we have, we get A and B, you get, you know, and it's, it's so hard for us as it is for you, and, you know, so where, where do you turn? And like Rich said, this, we've already put extra debt on these, on these kids, on these, these parents. And some of them are kids, as you know. I mean, this, I, my first kid went to school, I was twenty-three years old, twenty-four, I'm sorry. I was twenty-four years old, I was putting a kid through school, I was still a kid.
I think we're pretty much taxed to the levy limit too on, uh...
Yeah.
On it.
I, I think what we're trying to say to you and to the whole school committee and the people at home is, this board would love to give you the money. But what the board is up against and all the things that the finance committee has given us with the garbage, the two roofs and this and that, we feel it's just too much for the people of Millville and the seniors and everybody else, and even the moms and the dads with their children going to school. Too much of a burden and too much of a hit. We have to take that all in consideration. And the way we feel right now, at least the way I feel, I think it's too much for everybody to absorb. And we also take the recommendation from the finance committee on budgets and this and that. And what they're saying is, it's steep, it's steep. And we understand where you're coming from, and we understand that you wanna down, don't want these classes going up. We understand you wanna give the best education. But as this board here and even, even the other boards, they're giving us different signals, different money, and we just, we don't feel comfortable putting it out there because it's just another override which they're gonna have to absorb, and it's gonna be a big impact on everybody, on both sides. We don't have it, we don't know where to get it. And then the thing is, what are you gonna do? You're gonna hit the people up for taxes again. The finance committee's saying, uh, we looked at all the numbers, we want air, we want this, we want the Maryland ass to different things and this and that, and we're coming back with, we don't, at least I don't feel comfortable doing that at this time because of the two roofs and the other thing. And like you said, they haven't even got hit with that yet. So they're gonna get that plus? I'm sorry, I...
We've had our planning board trying to re, redo some of our bylaws, with their master plan to make the center of town, uh, attractive to business, to, to allow businesses. We get businesses that would like to be on one twenty-two here, 'cause it's the missing link from Uxbridge to, to Blackstone. Businesses don't wanna come because, well, special permits up, we're not going to Millville, skip right over. And we're trying to change that. We have the green energy people that are trying to save, save us money and also produce, uh, try, find ways to lease land as far as antennas, uh, for cellular towers, for anything to bring more revenue in, 'cause we're on a fixed income, like us, we're like a senior citizen in this town. We have a fixed income, 'cause we're a bedroom community. And every year, we can only increase it two and a half percent. By, what the planning board's trying to do to bring extra revenue in, what the green energy people are trying to do to bring extra money in for the town is, is a couple of steps, um, that we, but everything takes so much time. And we're just trying to take steps to, to have plenty of money for schools, have plenty of money for the library, the veterans, and, and the seniors. And, um, these are, so we're not just sitting here and having meetings every week and with our, sitting on our thumbs. We're, we have committees that are working with us and, and other departments in this town to, to increase our revenue so that we can have a larger revenue than a budget. But unfortunately, for the last six years that I've been a, a selectman, we've had, um, basically, a level-funded budget. It's like our budget is our revenue every year, and, and it's just scary crazy every year. And, and, and as you know, last year, we had, we said we're not gonna do tra- or maybe, uh, two years ago, we're not gonna do trash anymore. Um, so the people voted to do the override. Uh, they, they voted not to, to support the senior center and not to support the library, but they voted to support the trash, and, um...
And the one thing I would say is, you, you gave them the opportunity to make that choice. Where does that give the same opportunity?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm hearing too. That's all they're asking, for the same opportunity. Like, why can't just go to the people anyway? How can I do between five rather than fifteen hundred?
You guys, yeah, I mean, if the voter is saying no, then, you know...
That's what it's not.
That's what goes, it, it doesn't work. I, I think it's...
Anybody wanna make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, before you make a motion, um, I'm a parent here, my name is Valerie Higberti. I live in, uh, on Lake Street in Millville. And I just wanna pa- turn into the, uh, board here. Uh, this is a letter that we've distributed, and we got forty signatures from parents who have children attending school here in the council, in Millville, and that they would like for you to at least consider funding the school in any way possible above and beyond what you're considering.
We're gonna, we're gonna give the school whatever we can with what we have left, which right now is nothing. We have nothing left.
I understand that, and, uh, for me, it just came, I just found out about it, and I am, I don't know much, but I wanna educate myself and go in front of more committees to find out. I was in front of the finance committee last week discussing them with this and trying to find out more information. And I took to heart what Mr. Laura said, and I've been thinking about it and trying to understand it and to find out more information. Um, and I don't think, honestly, I wanna turn the petition, 'cause I told the parents I would turn in this letter to you. So if I could give that to you, just so the board would know. After the meeting with the finance committee, I don't, and I've told one of the parents is that I don't really foresee you guys approving an override, even though it might be something. But talking to the finance committee, it won't have a dramatic impact and that some of these cuts are still coming down the road anyways. So now my part that I would take back to the parents is that we need to go in front of the boards, maybe the selectmen, also the school committee, and try to direct where those cuts are gonna happen, so it's at least impact on our children. And I should look for guidance from the board, because I'm just stepping into this, not knowing a lot. I don't know if this town can give more grants or can apply for more grants, or if we've gotta contact our reps. I reached out to Senator Moore to try to start understanding seventy B, I think, or chapter seventy, and how it's determined.
Senator Moore knocked down increasing seventy.
Right.
Right here.
Well, I reached out to him to try to find out.
You just got your answer from him. He's not on board.
Right, I understand that, but I don't know, I'm watching one of the school committee's meetings. Uh, Dr. Perry, I think that's right, uh, said that they had, uh, one of the questions that was asked is how many grants that he got. And he got for this past year or for this coming year, eight hundred and fifty thousand. Is there more that he can apply for? Who does that? I don't know, I don't know if the board knows, I don't know if something, if the town can apply for grants to help out with the town funding? I don't know a lot.
We, we, chief, how much money and grants did we get this year roughly for the town?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
And he looks every day religiously for new grants.
He, he does, and, and the, the, his, um, clerk over there that, that works at the police station and the fire station, it's not her job, it's, she does it, she, she's good at it, and... That's what she does.
That's where we got the extra.
That's where the money comes from.
Without that, we'd have been in a hole by that amount, because that was necessary public safety equipment like turnout gear and air packs and things like that. And to maintain, you know, a fire, uh, operation, you need the turnout gear, you need the air packs and that kinda thing.
Well, is there guidance from the board about where parents, as parents, we can look for grants and funding? If we wanna try to do that for the town?
Well, there is, there is, uh, websites you can go on and you find them and.
Grants.gov.
Grants.gov.
Education's the second one. They're out there.
Yeah, you look on, just go on grants.gov.
Is this something that the town, that anybody in the town can do? Or do, do we have to come in front of the board for everyone?
Nope, you can do it. You can do it. Go online and look for it. Look for stuff for the school.
Then you bring it up and you come here and you say, look at, I found this grant. Such as, you know, whatever it is and, and it's full, and most grants are specific on what you can spend, you know. But whatever, whatever it is, it all, it helps the end, at the end of the day, helps the general budget. And whatever extras in the general budget, obviously, would be extra that you can give to the school, you know, whatever.
If I'm not mistaken, they had eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grants. They're targeted for specific reasons and I don't think in this situation would help us out at all.
No, I, it was just a number that they threw out. It's.
See like.
They had the grant writer of BBT and it's in, if I wasn't, if not mistaken, he got in like the two point six million grants this past year or something. So there's a difference there. There's obviously maybe more grants that they can.
Now, well, just, just for instance, alright, what types of impact, um, the state puts on, on these towns and cities? For instance, for, for law enforcement, there's this thing called the Quinn bill.
Right.
Well, the state used to pay half of that and the town paid half. The state said, Governor Patrick said, you know what, we're not gonna pay that anymore. But we still have to honor it, so the town has to pay the whole thing. Oh, so we still have to educate our law enforcement officers, which we don't, you know, regret doing. You know, we want the best for, for us. But the state said, we're not, we're gonna still make you honor that law, but we're not gonna give you any funding anymore. You're on your own. So what, what does that do? That takes money away from schools, libraries, seniors, and vaters. You see, so this is the big mushroom that, that started like this and now it's like this. All these unfunded mandates is what has killed us.
Are we working with our selectmen and trying to challenge these as a board? Is that what the, I'm assuming that's what the board does.
A statewide petition go around to stop the unfunded mandates. That didn't get too far.
Yeah, we sent letters.
Statewide, all three hundred and fifty-six, fifty-one communities sent it to Boston. Not all three hundred and fifty-one communities signed it in favor of it, but the majority. But like a lot of things that we ask for as a majority, the state still has the power to say, no.
Mr. Repose and I and, and, uh, this Grant, that was, uh, in Helen, um, met with staff members from Senator Moore's office to discuss the very issue of the school budget is, is a problem. It's, it's number one problem on our town. And took it back and, but that's about as far as that, that got me. But we did need, we, we got on a great lot of problems we're having with budgets. And towns can't come up with any more money for the school budget, where the state has, has to kick in long. You know, we sat here a good forty-five minutes to talk.
I know for me, it's hard to find out information except for if you don't come to the meeting. And a lot of parents probably can't. Uh, I know that I work hard with my son during the week. And I really don't have time to come down here. I found on YouTube that they, that there's meetings posted that you can review, which I started reviewing. Is there any way that we can encourage more like online notification? Or like even just a blog or something that maybe, I know it puts more on you guys? So we know what's going on, that these are some of the issues that are facing earlier on, so we're all mass surprised. And then screaming and yelling at each other because these issues aren't gonna go away. And they're not gonna be solved. But we've, I found out more with going with that finance committee about what's happening and that there are, just besides the children, there are senior senators, seniors that have problems here. I listened to one of the veterans liaisons present, and he said that a lot of veterans don't access.
If you, if, if you go on massfiscal.org. You'll see every one of our state, not the US senators, but every one of our state senators.
Right.
With, and, and our state reps. And each, each vote, excuse me, each vote that goes through daily, weekly, alright, is posted and how they voted on it. Their number, email, everything is there. Call them. See how they voted? Don't like it? Call them. You see how the guy in Hockington voted? Don't like it? Call him. Doesn't matter. You can call any one of them. If you don't like the way they're voting, for local aid. It's all in there. Massfiscal.org tells you everything you want. It's a private nonprofit organization. Nothing to do with the government. They're just a private group of people that, that go to the.
Is there something?
State House, watch all the votes and report it to us.
Is there something that we can put on the website in Millville? To say, you wanna find out about more of these issues, you should check out this website?
And then there's also links on that website to go further into the state's websites to see, uh, the detail of the particular vote.
Right.
That was taken.
So logistically, um, the warrant has to be posted by tomorrow to make the May twelfth?
No, it's gonna be fourteen days. So, um, it has to be by Friday. At the latest, it has to be posted by the constables.
So, um, I mean, as far as a warrant, I mean, would anybody entertain a motion? I mean.
It's a turnover, cause I, I feel like.
You don't wanna, I don't wanna let the seniors down. I don't wanna let the kids down.
And everything, well, you said is valid to the T. We got things that we all know that's on the horizon. That's gonna be, we're gonna be, they're gonna be shown enough for, and it's gonna be painful. It's gonna be painful.
I mean, we can change a lot of what happens in the state in November. But from now on November, isn't gonna fix today, you know?
Four hundred K.
Two.
Two hundred K. Do I hear one hundred K? Do I hear?
Come on.
We said from the beginning, we had to put a ceiling on there.
No, I understand that.
We had to put a ceiling on there. If we were to get half, okay? Uh, we would go back to the already million dollars with the cuts that we already, already have listed. And we'd say, hey, we've got seven hundred thousand of that. We can, we can take a couple hundred thousand off that, existing cuts. If it's nothing, then we go back, we have to add another four hundred something onto it. And it'll affect middle school and high school and its teachers. It's nothing else.
And what happens to follow up here?
We're back at, we're back at square one. Hopefully there's a little bit more money, you know, in our budget that we can contribute. This, 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 this year we can't contribute anything. So again, this is a longer term problem. We need a five year solution. And we need it to, we need a two percent increase every single year to survive. Cause then all the operational money goes up.
Just out of curiosity, if they put something on the town warrant, okay? There was, I think, two hundred thousand dollars, don't quote me, I don't have to pay my money, of cuts happening just to Millville Elementary School.
Well, it's a district. It's a district.
District.
And then we'd have to allocate it across the building too. We, we, maybe it's district cuts. We're not gonna stay here tonight. The law's gonna be saving the government cuts. They're, they're, they're still gonna feel.
So a percentage, a percentage of whatever they additionally allocate, the town people decide, presented to that portion of what is, might be awarded, will go to MES. A portion will go to the school, a portion will go to high school.
The two hundred thousand is going to back into our operating budget. And the hope is we'd get, um, a proportionate amount from Blackstone. Once you, once you get X dollars from Millville, we would get X dollars from Blackstone.
Where, where are they sitting on this?
They're waiting for you guys. As usual. You can shake your head, but you have the first town meeting. It was the same thing with Staples Nation.
You are absolutely right. They're waiting for us, bud.
Well, we're not gonna get to Blackstone, Millville, because it's like that, of course. And if that doesn't change, we're gonna be this every year, every single year. You have to remember is, wait, the town of Millville is twenty-eight percent. So i- if we can somehow come up with X amount of dollars, Blackstone has to come up with a seventy-two cents of the dollar. So, so in that sense, you're, you're getting something for twenty-eight cents of the dollar.
So what we're doing here right now, if we're having a little competition, we're gonna go over first. That's what, that's what we're going on. That's what we got going on, right? We're, we're, we're going down and then the state's gonna come in, then they're gonna tell you what's gonna happen.
Well, again, you can interpret it that way, okay? But there's a lot of dynamic between Blackstone and Millville. We're one, we're one budget, okay? One budget. You're roughly thirty percent of it. They're seventy percent of it, okay? So when, I'm not gonna sit here and guarantee two hundred thousand dollars is gonna go to MES, cause it's not.
To our budget, it's a, the school budget is, is up, is fifty percent of grade.
We're, we're your greatest service provider. We'll, we'll always be your biggest service provider.
That's never been changed.
But keep in mind, keep in mind, there's two hundred and fifty kids in MES. We have five hundred and eighteen kids in the district. It's still, even if it's not in that building, it is, the Millville kids are still everywhere else. So it's, it's district, if, if we are two hundred thousand, Blackstone's going to be a five hundred thousand.
And I don't think we can do, we cannot do anything without her, but would you agree?
Bridging the gap.
For Jen? I didn't hear. I didn't hear what you said.
Didn't prove at all.
I was just wondering.
Right. But I mean, she's gonna need to have, if we were even considering this, right?
Yeah. But it would have to be done by Thursday, so we could post it Friday.
Let me put, with two hundred thousand dollars.
Post a meeting for Thursday?
An override in perspective. Yeah, what, what that would do is that.
We don't have time to post a meeting for Thursday legally. That's it.
What, what that would do is that a normal, uh, levy increase would affect for every hundred thousand dollars in assessment. It would, uh, a quarterly increase wi- without the override would be forty-two dollars per hundred thousand dollars of assessment. Per quarter. No.
Per hundred thousand.
Per hundred thousand.
Hundred and sixty-eight dollars per hundred thousand per year.
And what, what a two hundred thousand dollar override or, I, I had, had a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar override. It would raise it another forty-one dollars a quarter.
So it'd be like, quick math, three thirty would be a dollar a day.
Three thirty, I don't think a dollar a day. Three hundred and thirty dollars a year a person's tax bill based on a hundred thousand dollar house.
Right. So if you had a two hundred thousand dollar valuation, you'd double that.
Double.
What's the average home in Millville?
On top of the.
Two fifty.
Two roofs.
That's taking a hit.
Two roofs.
Two hundred and four dollars a year.
And the, um, BBT debt exclusion. So you get three different debt exclusions in front of you. A proposition two and a half, override, it's already in the books. Plus this one, which is permanent, if you do a two, a two and a half, this one's permanent, the debt exclusion. At least when the, the debt is paid off, they.
Yeah, that doesn't go away.
Twenty years.
That stays there. Yeah. People think this is a one-shot deal. No, it stays there.
But the average home in Millville's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's the average, you know?
That's the average.
Yeah.
I mean, there's some with five hundred and some under, under one fifty, but.
The annual increase on two hundred and fifty thousand is, is what?
Two hundred and fifty-five dollars.
That's, uh, right, for the, uh.
So two hundred and fifty-five dollars additional taxes.
That's before the two roofs and BBT.
Yeah, that's.
And I don't know that those.
And what did the seniors get for a raise this year? Uh, eighty bucks?
How many senior citizens are in this town? What's the percentage of senior citizens?
That I don't remember.
In terms of total population, I think it's.
It's, it's high.
They have, they have their number at home.
They have the same rights to come out and vote for this.
Of course they have.
Parents are. Everyone in this community can come out and vote. If it's that much of a population, then the voters will, will speak.
It's actually two votes. If it makes it through the, well, it's gonna make it through here. But if it makes it through town meeting, then there's a townwide vote.
Exactly. Yeah, so it, it'll be a town, so the town meeting on May twelfth is just, if it makes it through there, you're right. It'll be a special ballot election, just like we're here in this room. That'd be what, sometime in June? Yeah. Sometime in June.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just direct two quick comments to the chairman of the school committee. Uh, Mr. Chaplin, I just wanted to comment, um, I think you had made a comment that Millville hasn't given additional for the past ten years?
Two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
Okay, cause I, I think we, we did, and I know Mr. Tringali was on the committee. We certainly gave additional. Yeah, okay, cause it wasn't ten years, cause I know since I've been here, we, we did for many years.
So we'll, we'll hit a wall every six years, where we can't contribute anymore, because we've also contributed for the last ten years.
Right.
Last year was a million. The year before that was four hundred and fifty thousand. The year before that. And that's our, that's your money too. I'm not, that's, that's the money that you have. We saved in our budget and we put in, we certified. So, um, we can't run a school system that way. Or we, but that, we can run a school system that way. It wouldn't be an effective one. And it wouldn't, people wouldn't be moving into towns.
No, I just wanted to clarify that I didn't think it was ten years, correct? Um, and the second thing is, um, I just, just having observed everything, working with the finance committee and with the selectmen, I guess I question the way you went about asking for the additional. And I, I appreciate that you were thinking outside the box and you said to the towns, you know, work together and let us know what you can afford. But I question if maybe that was where the issue might be. Because I think neither of the towns think they can afford anymore. So I wonder if, as Steve had mentioned, um, if we went by BBT's numbers, as you said, we'd be looking at an extra hundred and forty. I, I wonder if you had come to us with that number, if it might be something that would have been something more acceptable.
Yeah, yeah.
So I wonder if, I guess what I'm trying to say is if you, as Mr. Laura said, if you sharpened your pencils and you, you had come back with maybe something that could be stomached, if that would have worked out rather than putting it on the plates of the town, saying, let us know what.
Well, if you sharpened your pencils, not gonna make up a one point four million dollar gap. And we're very clear about that. No one was at our public hearing except Joe, okay, in, in March. I've been giving you financial forecasts since October.
No, absolutely.
You know, we met in the fall and we met in April, saying, listen, we didn't think the gap was gonna be this big, but it is. And can we talk about it? And really, the dialogue can't be one month a year. It has to be twelve months out of the year for the next five years, because we're gonna be in the same exact position next year. Same exact.
And also can't be us going to the school committee all the time. You guys have got to come to the finance committee. There's been two times. We've been meeting since January. Ninety-four and this one. So it goes both ways on this.
Absolutely, and I agree with you. And that's why we started having meetings in October and invited someone from the school, someone from the finance committee to be part of a monthly meeting, a budget subcommittee meeting.
That, it's gotta come, you guys gotta attend our meeting.
We can go anywhere you want. We can go anywhere you want. But to say that we haven't been transparent and open and invited you guys to a meeting starting in October, Joe's been in a few.
Oh, I'm not saying that.
We've been in a few of them. And that was all around discussion around how we kinda.
I don't think anybody's saying that at all, not at this board.
Okay.
And we didn't say that tonight either, that we weren't invited. We were, we saw what you gave us. The finance committee has been giving us updates. Our executive secretary's been giving us updates. So we're pretty, know what's going on, but that is just one piece of our pie. And that's a very important piece, cause you take half of our budget.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, we know what's going on. We have to.
Okay. But his, his question was, we should come to your meetings. We'll, we'll come to any meeting you want.
That's the chairman of the board and he has, and I understand what he's saying.
And, and, and he, right after our last meeting in April, Richie Millie, can we meet again? Sure, let's meet. We met three days later. So the, it's not a question of us not wanting to come to any meetings. We'll be at any meeting you want.
We didn't even entertain that. We never even said that, that you didn't wanna come to meetings, okay?
But he just says it's a two-way street though.
Well, it is.
And, and, and absolutely, I agree with you. So at this point, would you entertain a motion for an override for two hundred thousand dollars?
I've already got that out on the floor and I haven't got a, uh, a motion for it yet.
Do we need you on the way in?
Nope, we can't. Can't, gotta be down. We can't. It has to be posted Friday and we don't have lea- uh, the legal.
don't have lea-, uh, the legal amount of time from now to then to post another meeting.
Rich, I want, I want to hear your recommendation.
Well, you know, I think I pretty much stated it, I mean.
Right, just give us the facts, Rich. The facts, the facts are these, I mean.
You're the money man.
There is no money to add to the budget right now to do that without dipping into the stabilization fund and I really, um, would be against that because that's not for operations on it. It took us a long time to get back to something, we don't have a bond rating in this town.
We still have another bill from snow and ice coming.
We do, we do, but we don't even have a bond rating in the town right now, I mean, to get that, we've gotta start growing some financial stability here and without a stabilization fund, we can't do that.
Right.
So, my question is, Rich, so, my fear is, there's, there's a few steps to get, putting it up to a vote, it's kinda hard for me not to even, kinda not entertain that, but what concerns me is, if I'll be totally frank, the meeting gets stacked, right?
Mhm.
And then all of a sudden, it, it gets out to a vote and, you know what, like it's easier for parents and folks to get out and vote versus our senior population, I, I just, I'm thinking, I'm just thinking, oh, this could go sideways.
Yeah.
And, and I'm, I'm, I'm totally uneasy with this, guys, 'cause just, we're in the toughest shape as you are, so, we're trying to like, but I, you know, I kinda feel like we gotta.
Well, what scares me, Bob, is, like Rich was saying, okay, we got the trash, but we also have two more overrides coming.
I know.
And we don't even know what the number is, is that correct?
Right, those have to come in. And I don't, I don't think they stop there, John, I, I think we still have to figure out what's up with this building.
Exactly, we have a lot more. We have a lot more on our plate for this town to survive.
Yeah.
You know, the question becomes, can the taxpayers, you know, let them vote, I mean, that's, that's, you know, the position of the school committee, but can the taxpayers absorb the debt that's already in front of us?
Right.
And adding some more debt to it? And that's, that's, that's the issue right now.
Right.
On it, um, in terms of, of taxes, higher taxes.
Right.
And, and that's, that's what, what it is and based on what, um, you know, the town accountant has said, that, uh, she didn't think, from what I got from her, was it, it was a, a viable alternative at this point, I don't know if Joe, you tried more conversations than I did on it, um.
The, one, one of the problems here is that, uh, we live the situation every single day, um, you know, I, Mrs. Coffin, uh, makes comment to me, well, the boiler didn't come on or the this or that, or, there are all these issues and I think townspeople really are not really tuned in to the reality of trying to keep this all together.
Yeah, and that's it. Not plugged in, that's the issue.
And it's, it's, it's tough to make a decision to, you know, I'm all for democracy, but I'm also concerned about the survivability, you know, you know, I, I need to make this public, you know, like, in, uh, since two thousand and ten, we blew a gift of six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to keep the, the ship afloat.
And where was that?
There was a refund from M S B A on the original construction of the school. Most, and that money, by the way, has to be spent on the school and it had been with, with water issues and structural issues, that's where that money went, in two thousand and ten to, we've got a few crumbs left, maybe.
Forty thousand?
Yeah, that's six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. That didn't come under the tax levy.
You know, the concern, Steve and I, and everybody, is, is you ask a specific question about a specific issue and if you don't have the background of all the other things that should be considered, I don't think that's a good vote, I just don't, I don't think it's a good vote.
Mhm, you're right.
So, and that, what, that's what concerns me. If you, and if you, if you're plugged in and, you know what, it, it costs money to get all of these people educated on all the things that are coming at them, they don't even know they have to pay for yet.
I think for some of the parents that are, well, for my son's classroom, is that we have a lot of issues in the classroom and there's gonna be no support and I'm really afraid that my child is not gonna have a very good educational year, I think he's gonna lose out next year and that he will not progress and he'll be in third grade the way that a third grader should in any town. I don't think he's gonna be able to have that opportunity. I don't know if that's the same with, uh, I think they're talking about making one kindergarten class, I don't know if that's the same for kindergarten, but that's my concern, is that I'm thinking that he's going to get left behind a little bit because there is no funding. And that's going to progress, I don't know how to handle it, all I can do is come down here and ask and to find out and get this knowledge of what I can do as a parent to maybe help out the situation.
All right, so I'm gonna ask a couple questions. Is there, if, if we were even gonna consider this?
Mhm.
Is there a way to do it in such a fashion where we say, listen, the school committee's looking for this, but be aware, you have this coming, you have this coming, and you have this coming, and we're not sure what's gonna happen with town halls, but these things are on the horizon and these are also gonna cost you money. Okay, so legally, we can't.
Okay.
Um, hand out flyers.
Right.
To people's houses and whatever.
Right.
There can be a committee of people that would have an info packet and bring it to people's, you cannot legally put it in a mailbox because that's federal property, you have to hand it to them or put it in their door.
A town official can.
But a town official cannot orchestrate.
The influence, not come up in the election.
Cannot orchestrate any, um, pamphlet that would, that would, uh, change an election.
A similar thing, if there was an educational override, same thing, we, we.
Right.
We might be sending old things to kids' backpacks and stuff like that.
Well, one of my, my concerns from one of your comments is that even if the town votes to allow this money and Blackstone will match their percentage to our percentage, but then, there's no guarantee that any of the cut, cuts that you're considering for M E S that might affect me will not still not be cut.
That's right.
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's very correct.
So, that's still a big concern that even if I go ahead and give additional money, it might not benefit me.
But, and you know, we play totally Pollyanna, but, I mean, I truly don't see it as Blackstone Millville, I see it as the school district.
It's, it's a B M I budget.
And that's how we kinda move money around, I, I don't say, well, the, the Millville money came, so let's spend in Millville, Blackstone money, let's spend in Blackstone, I see it as the district's money because there are kids eventually.
Well, but you're right at when they start in sixth grade, but until then, they're still separated and if there's cuts that are affecting the Millville kids that aren't affecting the Blackstone kids, Millville kids might still be left behind, Blackstone kids will progress and it doesn't become equal until sixth grade.
Until they're small.
Right.
What's, what's the, what's the, what's the budget line item for healthcare? Just, I mean, you don't have to give me to the penny.
Don't give me the line item, uh, uh, no.
Not to the penny.
You're talking about the number?
Yeah, I mean, I don't care the pennies.
It was a zero percent case, state, state.
No, but what's, what do we pay?
Wait a minute, do something about that.
What do we pay? For the, for the district, huh? I know, I know we pay seventy-five percent.
Yeah. What's the dollar figure?
But what's the dollar amount?
I don't know, I, we can get it, you can look it up.
Well, I'm just looking at a place to cut in a contract negotiation, I mean.
Yeah, we're not, we're not gonna, the contract's already done.
Right, I know that, okay, but going forward, I mean, the private sector is a fifty-fifty share, uh, why should, uh, the private sector workers pay seventy-five percent of, of government employees? Okay, that's, that's my argument.
And every contract negotiation rule, my response is gonna be, we can negotiate in good faith and we're always, we're always there, believe me.
Okay, so, I mean, just, you know, just to bring it out in, in public, if, for instance, it's a four million dollar bill per year, we'll say, and we take, uh, thirty percent of that back, okay, in the next negotiation, how, how much is that? That's over a million dollars.
We, um.
You see, this is what we're talking about, we had to do it here, we cut in this, in just in this town hall, in two thousand and nine, my first year sitting in, up at this desk, uh, we cut pay.
Hours.
We cut hours, we, we changed certifications of certain jobs to, to knock down that pay as well, we, um, so people lost healthcare, uh, uh.
Coverage.
You know, uh, benefits and so.
Chief has made some smart hires, they've saved as much.
And, uh, you know, so on, so forth, and I'm, you know, I'm just showing you, not that you guys, not saying, huh, we can do it, so can you, I'm just saying, these are the cuts that we had to do, but we still have to function at a hundred percent of the state's mandate.
As do we.
Yeah.
As do we.
And so, as Bob and Joe said, we're all in the same boat.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna get in a conversation about cutting salaries or whatever, when the contract's up, we negotiate in good faith.
No, I'm just saying, just so everybody at home knows that, that, that there are things that, that maybe the teachers would be willing to give back for the good of the kids, you know? I know a lot of the teachers don't even live in the district, so it's really not their, you know, but I know they all care about the kids, so maybe they'd be willing, you don't know until you ask. The unions are very, very cooperative with us on our fire and our police, on our negotiations, they've been very cooperative, they know the positions we're in and, and, and they have been, I, I can't say enough how they've been with us.
And what, what is their healthcare percentage, fifty-fifty?
We're seventy-five twenty-five.
Seventy-five twenty-five as well, but, but we've taken back in other, other ways and.
They made quite a few concessions because of the status of the town.
There's one going on right now, we can't discuss, but, negotiation, but, the past one was.
We only have five employees on health.
Yeah, but we're, we're in a, if your age ladder supports that, it's a, it's a, it's not, it's not the big union, but it's a union.
Yeah, so, I mean, and I, and, and we believe and that's why, you know, you, we voted you people in and we believe you're gonna do what's best for the town, but, um, we're just saying, we're, we're all in the same boat here, you, you, you can't get blood from Iraq and, you know, our heart goes out to the people on the receiving end of all this, you know, and that's the taxpayer.
But it'll be hard to, you know, cut services, lay out people, put large class sizes without asking, so we're, we're asking and the first hurdle is you, the second hurdle is the town meeting, May twelfth, third hurdle might be a town vote in June.
Well, all right, so I don't wanna beat a dead horse anymore, it's probably dead three times over, but, um, so I, I've asked for a motion and I don't, I just don't have one as of yet, um, I know it's a big question to ask and I apologize for that. I think you've spoken.
We were at the annual town meeting warrant.
Yep.
Um, the changes that were voted on last Monday evening were made, uh, based on the recommendations taken, so, the vote we would be looking for is to reaffirm the votes taken that evening and approve the annual town meeting warrant and sign two originals.
All right. You gave Helen while you were sworn in?
Yep, he got back to you. Yep, yep.
Okay, so it's all five zero.
Uh, well, there were a couple four and ones.
There were a couple four ones.
So, a motion to, uh, sign the annual town meeting warrant?
I will second that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Four ayes.
And then the special, there were, um, no changes at all made out of the original special.
Yeah, the special we didn't, and we already voted to accept.
Yeah, we think it's already voted, so we would just be looking for a motion to approve the special town meeting warrant and sign a duplicate.
Motion to sign the special town meeting warrant and sign a duplicate.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four ayes.
Thank you, Rich. So, we have members forum, we think it's two thousand. Nobody. Okay, there's nothing listed, though.
In, in terms of, uh.
It's end of the second period.
I'll, I'll be quick.
Who's looking, I don't wanna know scores.
In the interest of full disclosure, uh, several, I think it was last week, uh, the highway surveyor approached me and wanted to speak with me and, uh, he was a little disconcerted about the way things were going and I, I basically, uh, asked him, or advised him that he had to be more visible and come before the board when he, when he had the issues that he was laying on me.
On you?
Well, basically.
On the board?
Yeah, on the board, the finance committee and, and the like.
Okay.
So, uh, I, I advised the highway surveyor that he needed to come before the board if he had an issue or a question, and, and, and one of them was a budget line item regarding, um, highway maintenance repairs.
Mhm.
And, uh, so, I basically indicated we needed an explanation for that.
You mean road repairs?
Road repairs, yeah.
Potholes and whatever.
Yeah, and, uh, so, he said, his advice to me says, was, would be to, um.
Chat service?
Not email, because he doesn't email all the time, doesn't, but, but to call him if, if issues come up, to call him, so that, I just wanted to share that with all of you.
Well, he actually answers my emails. He does answer my emails. He's like me, though, it takes him one or two days, so, I can't say a word about that, that's how I am. If you want an immediate, you get an email. Um, so our next regular, oh, sorry, next public, final public forum, anybody? Now, weren't Mrs. Hagerty, weren't you on the M E S playground?
Yes, I was, and if you would like me, I can kinda speak, think a little bit why Karen was gonna come in front of me to my.
I think we should just wait for her.
Yeah, we can wait for her, she, she.
I directed her to come down.
Oh, yeah, no, that's why, at, at first I saw you here, I said, oh, she made it. So, all right, that's fine, so our, our next regular meeting is Monday, May fifth at seven P M., uh, and we're gonna do signatures and then I, I'm looking for a motion to, um, recess the regular meeting, only to enter into, uh, executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Subsection Twenty-One A, uh, Part Two, and which immediately following, we would re-adjourn this meeting and only to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. I'll re-enter this meeting only to adjourn, I'm sorry. So moved. Seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for listening.
Oh, what a mess I have here.